Today, we have started our meeting at 4:00 PM. And so we have had the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, and the call to order. So at this time, I would ask the council for a motion to return to the regular meeting from executive session.
I make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we are back in regular session. And the first thing we need to do is approve today's agenda. May I have a motion to approve? Disapprove or make any changes to the agenda for today.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have public comments. Ms. Cindy, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, we have public presentations. And Mr. Patel is not here. So we are going to skip by number 6A. If Mr. Patel does come later, we will return to that agenda item. Next is the presentation of check for Earth Day. Lynn Boils with Keep Jasper Beautiful, Jasper County Beautiful. Ms. Boils and Ms. Combs, please approach the podium.
At this time, I'd like to give the, present this to the City of Hardyville. And I cannot tell y'all what this means to Keep Jasper Beautiful, to partner with the City of Hardyville. Every year, we do a major, major Earth Day event. And it is...
Good near to the mic. Well, no, you can turn around, but just talk into the mic.
But every April, we partner with the City of Hardyville, Keep Jasper County Beautiful, which is a litter prevention organization here in Jasper County. And we have so many volunteers, but Hardyville working with Jennifer Combs and her group. But the entire staff in Hardyville comes out and helps us clean the streets and the roads that day. And we probably collect over two tons of litter. And it means so much to keep Jasper beautiful, to keep our county clean and green, and especially Hardyville. So at this time, I'd like to present to the city $1,000 for their participation and all year their participation, not just for that day. So thank you so much.
Counsel, if you would come down so we can take a picture, please.
I got you another one.
I just want to tell the public, I nicknamed Ms. Boils a few years ago, Ms. Green, because she has truly helped keep Jasper County green, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And that name stuck.
Next, last year, we had, we, the City of Hardyville, had the great, great pleasure to have a new addition. And the city is constantly growing. And one of the great parts about growing is to have great new additions to our city. I'd like to present to the public our latest and greatest and most welcome addition, the Hardyville Garden Club. And I'd like to invite Ms. Desiree Hickey and whoever you have from the club, please join us at the podium. And tell us a little bit about the Hardyville Garden Club.
Can you hear me okay? Well, good evening, everyone. And as the mayor introduced, I'm Desiree Hickey. So currently, I'm the president of the Hardyville Garden Club of South Carolina. And Gretchen Weber, who's one of our other officers, she's here to accompany me tonight. And thank you, Mayor and council members, for inviting us here. Just to give you a little brief overview of the garden club, we're part of the national and state federated garden clubs of America, which offers us as a garden club, many opportunities that we may not have had if we were just a single garden club. We're one year old, and we started out about May of last year, so we're very new. We meet currently over at Hilton Head Lakes. We would like to expand our membership because we know Hardyville is a very large and diverse community, and we want to incorporate as many ideas and people that would like to be part of, one, keeping our community green, keeping it beautiful, and kind of building on what's already been established here. Just to give you a rundown of some of the things that we do provide, we provide education. Once a month, we have a meeting, which occurs on the fourth Thursday of every month, currently at 3:00. We also offer field trip opportunities. Education is a very big part of what we do, not just about gardening. We do fun stuff, like learning how to do floral design arrangements, but we also provide opportunities for our seniors and for our youth. And as far as our youth are concerned, because we are part of federated, which is national, we have scholarship opportunities for high school students. We have youth programs for elementary called Our Smokey Bear. This keeps our young people engaged in our community and also offers them opportunities for their own personal growth. The other thing that is a very big part of what we do is our civic involvement and environmentally in terms of, again, beautification of our community. And we've already had some discussions with your mayor and council members and city manager in regards to some of the things that we hope to do, that we've committed to. And part of it is being involved with the memorial park that is going to have a groundbreaking July 9th. Also, some of the grounds around here. But we also want to encourage all of you to, or people that you may know, to contact us. We do have a Facebook page. I know that Ms. Guzman, she has been very active as far as promoting us with the different communities. And you can always, I guess, contact here at the town if you need to get ahold of one of us. I don't know how we can establish that as far as what we need to do about that. But anyway, I welcome all of you, and I hope we can see some of you and get involved and join our team. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hickey or the garden club and what they're trying to accomplish?
To see if I can help you with anything, because we have beautification funding.
Okay, thank you, yes.
You said the fourth Thursday of every month?
Yes.
Pool house.
Yes, yes. And the calendar year is from September through May. December, we generally do something kind of festive, but generally, unless there's weather complications like we had this year in January, that's basically our calendar. Any other questions? Hey, thank you.
Ms. Hickey, if anybody's interested, or you know anybody's interested in joining the club, would you make sure that Ms. Oliver has your contact information? They can always call City Hall, and we'll pass on the information on how they can join the club. Okay? And I will, I just want to add to their presentation. If anybody went by City Hall last October, which you all understand is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the garden club put a beautiful flower arrangement in the case, in the shape of that ribbon, the breast cancer ribbon. We do have some photos that they took. It was beautifully done, and so we're, we have great expectations for more projects like that. I do.
Yes, because we did do that, and it came out beautifully. This October, we're doing, we're sponsoring Alzheimer's. And so I know Hardyville is participating, and we're going to do something else right in front of City Hall to flower arrangement as far as a ribbon, instead of doing a pink ribbon like breast cancer awareness, it's Alzheimer's awareness. So that's one of the things that we're doing to promote civic responsibility and encouragement. So just wanted to just put that out there, because you'll start seeing things.
Great, thank you again. Okay, next, we have the presentation approval of minutes from the June 5, 2025 regular city council meeting. They have a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to the minutes of June 5.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 25.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have no old business tonight, everything is new. And the first order of business is the first reading of an ordinance to consider an initial master plan for a portion of parcel 0420006045 to be known as Hilton Head Lakes West Pods H and F3. This is a 225-acre parcel. Its ordinance number 202506-18A. Mr. Gruber, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So on your agenda this evening, items A, B, and C are all related to the same development, but they are separate master plans within that development. And so while we're going to vote on each of them separately, I think it would be appropriate for us to probably discuss all three of them collectively, just because of how interconnected in nature all three of them are. And so this has been a discussion as part of the Hilton Head Lakes West Master Plan. We've met several times about that agreement recently to approve their development agreement. This matter's gone before the Planning Commission, has received recommendation from approval for the Planning Commission, and then we held a workshop recently to review these matters. And so it is now pending before you on first reading. And with that, I'll turn it over to the planning staff and let them kind of give an overview of these master plans.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We're going to start with an overview of all three of these master plans. Hopefully, that will help answer the questions. That's how we presented it at the workshop, and I'm just going to do a real high-level breeze through right now. So the first one, as mentioned, was Pod H1, H2, and F3, initial master plan. Project setting shown here, we're looking at this very first one, which is the southernmost of the three pods that we're referring to. The second one we'll talk about is, has more frontage on I-95, it's just to the north of that one. And then the final one is Pod G, which will be more interior. This is an overview of all three put together on one map. Pod I down here was already previously approved. We're looking at, for this approval, at Pods H1, H2, and F3, that's the first one. Pod F2 and F3, and then finally, as I mentioned, Pod G, which is more interior. Some site, some photos of the sites. In the first pod we're going to be referring to, it does have these Dominion's substation, power substation, as well as the cemetery. These are all located off of the extension of Lakeside Boulevard North. Proposed master plan, first one, as mentioned, it does sit right above Pod I, which is also adjacent to the Hardyville Schools. It is 225 acres, located off of Lakeside Boulevard. The name of Lakeside will be changing once it passes this one to Emerson Lake Boulevard. Maximum of 850 single-family residential units. It does have the cemetery, and it does have the substation. There will be parking buffers and everything to address the cemetery and to keep it separate. This is not a gated community, and it does have access, one full access off of Lakeside Boulevard and other access off of the pod, to the pods surrounding it. Pods, the proposed open space, excuse me, you can see the sidewalk and trail system through there, and the open space pockets and parks and lagoons. They are looking at providing 47% overall open space with 10% active open space. Next one is F2 and F3. 223 acres, located just north of the last one. And it is 550 single-family residential units detached. It does have an amenity center and all of that, just like the last one, and the traffic impact analysis has been provided. This has two full access points off of Emerson Lake, which is the continuation of Lakeside Boulevard, and connectivity to the previous pod as well. 46% open space with 11% active open space. And finally, master plan, Pod G. It is 306 acres. It is a maximum of single-family residential units attached and detached. Project is anticipated also to have two full access points and amenity center and those type of uses. And the open space exhibit is shown here with the trails and everything. No, you're fine, Katie, thank you. 49% open space with 10% of active open space. As mentioned previously in the meetings, it did go to Planning Commission, these were recommended for approval. City council workshop was held on this, and now we're at the first of two readings from city council. After this process, if approved, they will go to site development process where all the details of the engineering and everything would be approved, as well as other agencies. So Planning Commission recommendation was a three-to-one vote, approved with conditions based on open space conservation easements, discussions to continue, and we had a lot of those at the workshop. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant and representatives are here to answer any questions as well.
Does the applicant have anything to add?
Good afternoon, I'm Nathan with Thomason-Hudson. Not, not a lot to add. I did want to mention, if you've been out there, Brandon showed a couple of the photos, but the two and a half miles of divided Boulevard is under construction. Along with that, there's the 10-foot multi-use path that's being extended up as well. We have a regional pump station and 16-inch water main that's going to serve about 3,800 units, not only this pod, but even to the north as part of the PDD continues to develop. Did want to mention, we have a lot of connectivity between the different pods as well. There will be different developers, different builders as this goes forward, but all of it will be cohesive from a planning standpoint with signage. If y'all have seen the new entry signage out there at Lakeside Boulevard. If y'all have seen the new entry signage out there at Lakeside Boulevard. So that's kind of the consistent theme that they'd like to pull through the community as it goes forward. Also here with Brian Kiernan of L.K. Development Group, and we'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Okay, let's start, Council questioning with Mr. Mearsman.
Part of my questions are for your, mostly for staff. We had the questions of connectivity, that's those of all been addressed through there. I know there's been some concern in the past about stormwater retention, drainage, those have all been taken care of. The trails, is everything with our public safety? Are they, have they reviewed all these plans, and they're comfortable with all of them also?
Yes, sir, and they will continue to be a part of all of these conversations and discussions throughout the process, as I mentioned, the Staff Review Committee meeting and with all the other agencies.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all for working through this. It's been a process, and I think you've worked real well with it. If I may ask, the vote at Planning was three-to-one. Was there any issues that we should be aware of with that one?
Yeah, I could address that. Commissioner Richard Arzillo had some concerns with conservation easements, and something that had passed recently, I guess in the county. But there are no conservation easements proposed within these communities. There's some existing conservation easements further to the east that are funded by the developer, but I think that was his main concern, and that was why he voted against it.
And we covered those at the workshop.
Okay, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Guzman.
I have a couple of questions. Kiernan might be able to answer. I know we talked in depth about the stormwater thing, and I just wanted to, but we are going to work with a 100-year flood, correct?
That is, that is per our design, yes.
And the culverts, who's going to maintain the culverts to make sure that nothing's getting blocked in there, and that during a flood, everything's just free-flowing and moving out?
During construction, we will, the developer and the builders, and then those areas get turned over to the HOA.
And they'll take care of the culverts.
Correct.
And the separation between the residential section and the cemetery, how, because I know you're going to be using part of the property wanting that section to accommodate the folks, whoever wants to go to the cemetery. Is that what's happening, you know, having a separate egress and ingress to the cemetery, right?
That is correct, and the plan is to utilize the 50-foot buffer and leave the existing trees that are there, and then we will be putting in a fence in there as well. And we're basically isolating that spot.
So we don't have to worry about, you know, kids look at kids, and they want to go through, you see what's back there?
That's right.
And I'm just worried that with that cemetery that has been on this stuff for so long that suddenly kids will, you know, on a day ago, try to do something in that cemetery. So that's what I'm concerned about.
We'll be putting up a fence, and we can't keep the kids out.
Oh, I know.
I mean, there's some cemeteries that don't have any fences, but, you know, our goal is to isolate that, identify and gain access through path, so anybody that has family there or wants to visit, can visit.
Okay.
But there will be a fence.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll.
The point about the connectivity and the safety, Steve, we tried to address all that and had Steve here last time, so you completely satisfied with that. And the, and the last thing, we talked about the one vote, we did have Richard come up here during the workshop, and he did have some valid points, valid concerns that, that he was concerned about, and he asked, and I was concerned about, and son, to be honest with you, I was not familiar with, but I think, Mr. Mayor, you were familiar with most of that, and so you're satisfied with the issues that Mr. Arzillo addressed.
As I mentioned, at, you know, Mr. Arzillo, and rightfully so, was concerned about enriching any developer by using taxpayer money to buy easements in a development that's already taking place particularly. And I referred back to a meeting we had, the Transportation Sales Tax Committee that was installed as part of the ordinance, and the conversation that the conservation easements that are purchased with taxpayer money will come through, A, that committee, and then B, through to County Council, to assure that those kinds of concerns are met, that we're not enriching private developers by buying property they weren't going to develop anyway. So, and I think that was the core of the concern. So, yes, I think that we, we're satisfied that we're not going to allow that to happen. And when I say "we," not only the committee, but the County Council.
And that was my two concerns.
As for me, I, I think that for those of you who, most of you who are not here at the workshop on June 2, we covered a lot of issues, and we're not repeating those issues There were a lot of more questions, but I just want to point out, does anybody want to hear what we talked about on June 2? That video is available on the website. Couple of things, and that were talked about with the cemetery, again, it wasn't just brought up, there's going to, I brought up the concern about going through the neighborhoods of people who want to visit that cemetery, is there going to be parking? And I believe you said there was, there's going to be parking, so I think that's important for members of the public to know, if they have family out there in that cemetery, they're going to be able to get through there, they're going to be able to park, and they're going to be able to go visit their interred loved ones. The other big concern that I had, and I brought up, were the access points, and being the size of these developments, with particularly that first one, H1 and H2 and F3, that there's only one community entrance into that, and there are substantial number of homes there. And my concern was for our public safety units, we have response times, especially when somebody's in medical distress, to get them back there. So my concern was only having that one access point. Can we just review that and the answer that was given at that time?
Yes, sir. One thing that we can do that we discussed was having a construction access, which, right across from the regional pump station, you see there just north of that.
Point that out for the public, get the pointer.
So this access here, the, the road's going to be constructed, or, I mean, very soon up, up through here, so as this is getting developed, we can have this access as well, but we could build a construction road access here with this connectivity, so that you've got two points of ingress and egress.
Okay. Again, and my concern's not totally alleviated. If you look at F3 back there, all right, there's a lot of streets to go through to get to the, to the back 40, and I just want, in the site review, to make sure that our first responders are satisfied that that distance is enough, and, and Chief Frau, if you want to come up and address that, that...
You'll say I nodded to him.
That we have, you have enough time within the protocols of, of response time, that you're going to have, what, to figure, because you're going to be coming up from the south, and so you're going to go into that first entry point. Do you have enough time to get to F3, the furthest-most point, before somebody is in a critical situation?
So we would have to look at that in detail once it comes across to us, with official submittal to us, but those are things that we do take in account, that we look at, that correlates with fire and EMS responses in there, as well as the code for the ingress and egress, depending on the density that, that will be in that area.
Okay, that's, I, I'm going to leave it in your hands, but I can't stress more that we have to keep everybody in these communities safe and within the response times that we've committed our, our public to have.
I was alluding to, Mayor, with that safety thing.
That is one thing that we will look at once it goes through all the processes that makes it to us, that, but we will take a look at that to make sure that it will fulfill those obligations.
So could we write down that Chief Frau has personally guaranteed this?
He's going to drive it, just to make sure.
They wouldn't get their development permit.
Chief, chief, don't go. You're not off the hook that easy, pal.
Since this is first reading, can you have more information for us by second reading?
If Nathan and them could provide that to us, we would be glad to take a look at it and go from there.
I think distances to Councilman Mearsman's point.
Oh, yeah.
If you knew how many miles, how much is normal time, where they're coming from, so you could, you could be satisfied under the conditions of what we see here, that it's going to fall within the response, right? Steve, is that what you want?
That's what I'm talking, we're looking at a drawing on here and not knowing distance in feet and everything like that, the scale. I would feel more comfortable if I had a, I know, I appreciate what you're doing, but just a little more assurance that we are making this right decision by approving this. You understand where I'm coming from with what I have to deal with.
Right, I'll get with Nathan, and we'll run a, we'll get them to run a GIS overlay on it to make sure.
That would be great.
A simulated.
Yes.
That's good.
Thank you.
Good question, Steve.
I'd like to make that a condition of second approval, though.
I think so, too.
Yes.
Ms. Guzman, do you have?
Yes. You know, there's a street down in Mag Walk that I don't know how you can turn a truck in there. I think you know the one I'm talking, I think it's the second or, second and, second or third entrance, street from Mag Walk.
Okay.
In drag. It is so narrow, I, I had to do a three-point turn in my little Honda, and I don't know how you guys are going to turn your rigs back there. So my concern is, when you guys go to site review, to make sure, when you see all the drawings, that you guys have enough turning radius in there for all your apparatus.
Correct. We have those, and we do, we run our own analysis on it through the program, we have to make sure that it does work, there are specific standards in our, in our SRC checklist that they have to abide by. Some of the others have were kind of predated some of the, the standards that we had, so, but moving forward, that's the way that we do it, we make sure that it meets the intent of both city ordinance and fire code.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Didn't they agree at the lesson that they would get you lessons for three-point turns?
I can do a three-point turn, trust me, with one hand, I can do a three-point turn. You're driving, you're offering to be careful.
Okay.
Let me know when you do this.
Thank you for that, those questions, Council. At this time, I would like to offer the public to come forward with any comments or questions, and as Mr. Gruber prefaced, if you have these pods or different developments, master plans are in three separate votes, but if you have any questions about any of them, please feel free, you're welcome to come forward and ask questions or make comments at this time.
Yep.
Okay, seeing none, got off easy today.
I'm okay.
Okay. I'd like, at this time, again, we have to take three separate votes, so the first one is ordinance 2025-06-18A. May I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changing, changes to the first reading of ordinance 2025-06-18A?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2025-06-18A.
Mayor, can we add caveat, though?
Yeah, you want, Mr. Mearsman, you want to add that?
Yes, and with that, prior to second reading, we have the public safety, safety transit approval from the Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Can I have a point of order? So you can have a public safety, I guess they can give you their opinion on it, that approval has to happen during the site review process, because they'll have more specific information at that time, but I think what they can give you is an overview and some assurances that, that, that they do have fire safety access.
Okay.
But the use of the approval, that, that would be improper at this time, during this stage in the approval process.
Okay. Can I ask for their opinion?
So what you're saying is that your approval of first reading is conditioned upon receiving a favorable report back from fire rescue, that they see no objections with that.
Correct.
That, that we can do.
Okay. Okay, so with that modified motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by Council or the public? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next ordinance in reference to these parcels is ordinance 2025-06-18B. These are for the pods F1 and F2, and can we put those up on the maps on the screen? Okay, and just in case Council has any further questions, has occurred to them, I'll give you one, another opportunity. Mr. Carroll, any further comments or questions on this particular parcel?
No, sir, as long as it's, that stipulation will stand.
Mrs. Guzman.
No questions.
Mr. Mearsman.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
I have no further questions, so at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Do you have any questions on, now, these are parcels F1 and F2, these are separate than, from the three that you saw previously. Okay, seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to ordinance
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2025-06-18B.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by Council or the public? Seeing none, I'll take a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, this is the third of the three, and this is Pod G, and can we put that, okay, you have that one up there, and this is ordinance 2025-06-18C. Mr. Mearsman, any further comments on this particular parcel?
No, sir.
Mrs. Guzman.
No.
Mr. Carroll.
No, sir.
I have no further questions, and, but I, I do think it's important to point out that these complicated decisions, we added in between Planning Commission and this first vote, a workshop, and this particular workshop on these parcels was a couple of hours long. So even though the public doesn't see a lot of questions here tonight, because we exhausted the, the questions at June 2, so that we were prepared to make this vote here tonight. So, that's the only comment I have on this. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any comments or questions on what's known as Pod G here? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to the first reading of ordinance 2025- reading of ordinance 2025-06-18C.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-06-18C for first reading.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by council or the public? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, second reading is at our next meeting, which is July?
10th.
10th, okay. Next, this is an ordinance to amend the Municipal Zoning and Development Ordinance, the MZDO, Section 2.6, transect, sect, zone. No, no, I'm not even going there. Zone T3 for shared parking and density reduction. This is ordinance 2025-06-18D. Mr. Gruber, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of years ago, the city adopted a series of transect zones with the goal of fostering a vibrant commercial downtown area within the center of what is probably the Hardyville City. And, and as a part of that, we received a request to consider some development proposals that, the outgrowth from that was an analysis that we might need to look at amending some language within our MZDO. And so the staff has been working on creating that amendment, particularly focused on two aspects, one, shared parking within the transect zone downtown area, and then, two, looking at the density of properties that are in surrounding areas to the transect zone. And so I'm gonna let them kind of explain those amendments to you, but I would highlight that these, this has come through the planning commission, and the planning commission failed to take a vote on the matter, or at least they failed to obtain a positive majority vote, but it was presented to them for consideration.
Good evening again on this one. This is for a text amendment to the MZDO, to our zoning ordinance, as Mr. Gruber explained, for these zones that do front along, it's basically along White Hardy Boulevard and Main Street is where the transect zones are. You can see on this map here, the T4 runs along White Hardy, T5, Main Street, as well as the T3 area. You see on this map, I'm gonna try to explain it a little differently with the planning commission, because it does, it's a little confusing once you get down and dirty with this one. T3 right now expands all the way down Charles Street and all the way down to the cul-de-sac of Saul's Court. We are proposing in this text amendment to remove a good portion of those single-family homes from the transect zone, and I'll get that, I'll hopefully clarify that a little bit more as we go along. The residents in the vicinity of Saul's Court and Charles Street have expressed concerns over that T3 zoning and about the density and overdevelopment right next to their single-family homes, which we do understand and want to clarify. The T3 district encourages greater density than traditional single-family, and the removal is recommended for a consideration that is not appropriate to go all the way down those two streets. So we are looking to remove, the removal of 30 parcels from the T3 zoning district. This is how it, the zoning ordinance, this is existing zoning, this does not show the overlay on here. This is the underlying zoning district where, that, that's going through. And the part that's being removed from T3 is shaded in this green area. So all of those will be removed. These two parcels here that are, even with the commercial, those will remain, as will this, this area right here by the church, and then this one on Gar Lane that does have connectivity to that, parcels that front on White Hardy.
Branna, I'd like to interrupt because I know there was confusion before.
Okay, absolutely.
You say that those 30 parcels are removed from T3.
They're gonna be taken out of the transect zones, and all they will have is the single-family residential zoning as has been.
Okay, that was my question, where did they go?
Yep.
Say that again.
The underlying zoning, the single-family residential zoning will remain, and just like they have been for years, for 20 years I've been here, single-family residential zoning. They will not have the transect zones, the encouragement of the downtown style, any of that, it's just a single-family residential neighborhood.
So, again, to clarify, they're not gonna be in T3?
Nope.
So they will be in the same type zoning as Eps Avenue?
Yes.
Single-family resident?
Single-family residential.
Okay.
Thank you. This is just a list of the, 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 the second part of that, besides removing those parcels from T3, is to change the under, over, the density that is allowed in the T3 overlay zone. The T3 overlays on, as it stands today, as 16 units per acre, we are recommending eight units per acre. Now, most of these are well under an acre in size, and so you would have to, you know, prorate it, but it, it does make it more compatible with those uses and, and a better transition from the intense commercial to the single-family district. So that is what it is, and then, okay, thank you. And finally, as it stands now, the, the shared parking that is essential to developing a downtown without these big parking garages or, or fields of parking, which nobody wants, is a shared parking ordinance, and to allow that. Our transect zone, however, for whatever reason, did not allow the shared parking as, as it is intended to react, so we are putting the, the language in there to allow for shared parking in those transect zones. That is not go over onto those other lots or previous zoning, it's just for the transect, tran, now have you got me saying it, mayor, transect zones as the overlays called for, and the White Hardy Boulevard master plan called for. So that's, that's basically what goes that. Does that, the adjustment to these does make it more compatible with what we're trying to approve for, or achieve with the White Hardy Boulevard master plan and what we want to develop our downtown district. Did get a planning commission, as, as was mentioned, it failed to get a vote, we moved on, and so this has no recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions and clarify any further, because I know, like I said, I know it's confusing, and we even get confused when we talk about it.
Okay, we'll open up for council and Mr. Carroll.
You said that the planning committee, which is very unusual for them not to come up with a vote, did they give you any indication why they were concerned or confused?
They made a motion to approve, it failed to get a second. At that point, due to just confusion and, and of the whole subject matter, we failed to make a motion to disapprove, but that's where it stood, as a lack of unapproval, lack of, lack of recommendation.
If I might jump in here to help Mr. Carroll's question, I did do some inquiring, and apparently there was some confusion, particularly about the 30 existing parcels, where they were gonna go, and that's why I asked the question, to make sure that this council understood, and I don't think the, the planning commission understood where those 30 parcels were going and what, what the difference was, at least from, you know, in my own conversations with some planning commission members that, that, because I wanted to know why there wasn't a second, and they were confused, and that's why they didn't offer a second, so that, to answer your question. Mrs. Guzman?
I have no questions.
Yeah, you're finished, right? Mr. Mearsman?
Yes, Mayor. You, we talk shared parking.
Yes.
Yeah, I see the smile on your face with that one. Okay, shared parking. As we go through these and we are adjusting density on these properties, is there a, a graph or a, a guide for the parking for these necessary?
There is, there is, it's, it's in the ordinance already. It, it's, it's a part of the ordinance, that was explained very well and is very delineated, and I apologize, you do not have that graphic up for you, but there's a matrix in there, and it does show with residential, with commercial, the, how the parking is shared. It's something we have to follow as we're going through this, the SRC process when these come through. All of these, whether it's residential or any, or commercial, will be going through the staff review committee process. That's another level of, of approval. The shared parking is to make sure that we're not creating problems like have happened in the past in other places that have shared parking. We wanted to make sure when we first did the ordinance, that we were providing parking when, at the times when those uses needed parking. So you're not gonna have a nightclub next to a restaurant that's gonna share parking, that's, and we're not gonna have nightclubs anyway, but that kind of thing, but we want to make sure that the, the shared parking is appropriate. Churches with things that aren't open when churches are typically, are typically in service, those types of things, but there is a matrix in the ordinance already.
Okay, because, because parking is always an issue.
Yes.
We, everybody understands that.
Absolutely.
This is only first reading that we're here, could you provide us with that information?
Absolutely, we'll have that included.
For, for second reading, because it's not only for us on the council, I think the public, the residents of Saul's Court and everybody that lives around there, it's something we should all be aware of.
And another thing that does in there, it does pull that parking, so people aren't going to be parking along Saul's Court, it's going to be pulled back into other areas, municipal hub and everything, to make sure that it all works together.
As, as the future goes on, that whole area is going to be busy, we're, with our Veterans Park and the municipal hub and everything else there, so having answers for the parking now, it will save problems down the road. So if you could have that for, for second reading, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Explain to me the difference between T3 and res, single-family residence.
Um, T3 allows more attached homes, um, single-family residential just allows duplexes.
Okay, so.
But it would allow townhomes, but with the density.
Single-family residents do allow duplexes.
Does allow duplexes.
Okay. And what else does T3 allow, besides homes?
T3 is going to have requirements for lot standards and architectural requirements that go above what single-family would be, so for instance, the T3 zoning district is going to have a, not a maximum build out for the frontage, but you are going to have a minimum, so you're gonna have to make your buildings wider and come closer to the streets, and it's still residential, but they, they're different type than are on that street right now, maybe.
Here's the reason.
Also going to help, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, it's also going to the T3 district for, like, the, those lots there, it's also going to pull that parking into the center of the property, so it's not on either edge or around, which is going to help.
Okay, so, and here's the reason for my question. There are just a few lots that we're leaving as T3. Why not make them residential like all the other green areas? What's the rationale for that?
The rationale is, is when you have T4, T5, and those things, there is a natural progression. You want to have that, that transition down to single-family residential, you don't want just to have a single-family residential house built right on beside T4, which does allow for commercial. So as you go up in, in the numbers, the higher numbers are more intensity and more intense uses. So it is, is, in the planning world, that's what you want to do, is have a, have a slope down to lesser intense uses. The, that, that is usually done with attached housing, I'll, I'll be honest, that's, that's typically what happens.
Go from town center to, for a single family.
Yes, if it didn't, it would go from towns, as she mentioned, Katie just said, it would go from town center, which is T5, to residential, single-family residential, and we need that T3 to buffer it. It's a, it's a good buffer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. American, I had.
Yes.
Add on to what you just, now, the resident, single residential, nothing's changed for the people, I mean, not one thing has changed.
Nothing at all, nothing.
Because I think there are still, and hopefully there's gonna be some questions asked tonight, because I think some of the residents are still concerned, and maybe they can, you can help them with some of their questions.
And, and I'll offer, once again, we are happy to sit down with anyone and go over this, too, at any time Katie and I are.
If I can ask just one question. Sure. What we are doing is we are reducing density.
Yes.
We are taking, I remember, as we discussed, along Main Street there is part of our downtown corridor plan, we have the designs, what we would like to see there, and we're, we're looking at it through a different set of glasses now, not based on just what's there, but what the residents want and the needs for the area, and I think it's a good change that we've listened to the residents to, to make this happen. I think reducing the density is probably the best move that we can, that we can make, because we may have more of these come up, too, as we come along.
And that's one thing, as we've learned with doing these different zoning techniques, like the overlay zones with the transect zones and some different things like that, it is a dynamic document. We don't want it to be just static, we want to be able to learn from what we have out there and make adjustments, and please the community, as well as meet the intent of the plans that we put in place.
Can we call it something else besides a transect zone? I can't say that word.
Form-based.
Okay, better, thank you.
Hybrid, hybrid form-based.
Yeah. So there's, there's, to summarize, there, before I turn it over to the public, there are two main things that we're approving tonight. One, we're taking the density down from 16 to 8, all right? Two, we're allowing shared parking. What was the third one?
We're removing those 30 parcels from.
And we're removing the 30 parcels from?
T3.
T3, that T-word.
Yeah, that, that.
To single-family resident.
Hybrid zoning.
Okay, all right, so those three, those are the three things we are approving tonight.
With this text amendment.
That are different from before.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanna frame it for what our decision is. Okay, any other questions by council? At this time, I'd like to open the floor to the public for any comments or questions that anyone from the public would like to raise at this time. Sir, you had your hand up first, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the public record.
Hello, how's everyone? My name is Adolph Brown, and yeah, I have a.
You can address the council.
Okay, this is kinda, it's always a tough one. I just wanna make sure I'm clear on a couple of things, so when it comes to density, with the rising cost of everything, so we have, let's say, a person has a single-family home, they have aging parents, they need to add on to that house to add an in-law suite, is that allowable? That's one question. Want me to give away all of the?
No, let's go one at a time, so we don't get confused. Branna, could you answer that question first?
Yes, our single-family residential zoning does allow for accessory dwelling units, ADUs as they're called, they're smaller, and that is allowed, it's based on the size of the lot and if it can fit all the other standards, but yes, that is an allowance.
So sir, the 30 that's, are coming out of T3 and all the other homes that are already in. and all the other homes that are already in single-family residence, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, last point, and I'll just make this. I was a builder many years ago. And I know these guys probably have some of the same sentiments, that density is money, density is value. So whenever you take density away from something, value goes down. So right now, as a potential homeowner there, I might not care so much about the density today. But let's say later I want to move that home, I want to sell it off, I need to relocate or do anything. The fact that the density is now lower on that property makes the property less valuable. But that's just a thought that you need, always think about. When you go to buy property as a developer, you want to find out what the density is. If the density is low, the price is lower. If the density is up, there's more things you can do with it. It starts to fluctuate the price on that property. So people who live there today might say, oh, I don't want all these houses. But their grandchildren or their great-grandchildren might want to move that house later. And they might want that density sitting there. That's just the point.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Bullard and 105 Saul's Court. Y'all know who I am. A lot of the public comments were concerned about the two, about the lots at the head of Saul's Court. We're not changing anything with them. I don't see where we're getting, I think that's a great idea. But, you know, leaving out those two lots on a cul-de-sac road that has one empty lot that is, you know, built out. Changing that and the dynamics for the people that have lived there for 30 years is going to be huge. Right now, you can drive down Saul's Court and find a car parked on the street because the houses that are there don't have parking now. So I don't really see what makes us think that, you know, shared parking is going to help that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other comments or questions by the public, I'd now call for a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes. This is first reading of ordinance 2025-06-18D.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve with a condition that prior to second reading of this ordinance, that staff provide us and the public with a parking plan or diagram that will fit this zoning. In that case, then I would make a motion that we approve on first reading, 2025-06-18D.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. We're going to call for a, any further comments by council or the public? We're going to call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, all opposed? Carries 4-0. Next, an ordinance to annex into the city of Hardyville, parcel 0800002003, consisting of approximately 1.9 acres of real estate located in Jasper County, not already within the city limits as well as all adjacent property rights of way. This is off Argent Boulevard. This is 2025-06-18E. Mr. Gruber, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This matter came before the Planning Commission on a request by the property owner to be annexed into the city limits. It is located within the city's growth boundary. And my understanding is the current Jasper County zoning classification is general commercial. We are looking to maintain that same zoning classification and bring it in as general commercial. And so from a staff standpoint, we've really looked at this as a matter of filling in a donut hole because the zoning relatively remains the same. And then just making sure that all other elements align with our comprehensive plan and our MZDO. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff and let them explain the details.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, so this is for, as Josh stated, an annexation petition and a zoning map amendment. It's located on Argent Boulevard. It's 1.9 acres, located between Shortcut Road and 170. Access is directly off of Argent Boulevard at this time. And the applicant is requesting to go from general commercial in Jasper County to general commercial in the city of Hardyville. The applicant currently owns this parcel back here, which is already in the city. The parcel in question is this front parcel here. And you can see the location here, Shortcut Road down here. And you have the Farino Commercial Project right there. Currently, the parcels around them are limited industrial, general commercial, and multifamily residential. All of the stuff that's in color here is all located in the city, so. Parcel's undeveloped at this time. You have the view looking to the east here and to the west here. The site is within the annexation boundary. And this would meet the intent of the comprehensive plan by prioritizing the, filling in the donut holes. This has been in front of Planning Commission, and now they are here seeking your consideration and approval. It was unanimously recommended to approve the zoning as presented. And at this time, I'm going to introduce Mr. Bastardi. He and some others are here to talk about their intentions for the project.
Thank you. Gentlemen, please state your name, address, and your affiliation for the public record.
Yes, my name is Anthony Bastardi. And I live in Shelter Cove in Hilton Head Island. And with me here today is Matthew Ferris. Matthew is the managing member of Two Tides Development. And I am the project developer.
Okay. And are you the landowners?
Yes.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
They do have some proposed renderings to show.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two renderings. This is a rendering of the project standing in the east, looking west on Argent Boulevard. And let me mention the two flags that you see pointing to the various buildings. This is four buildings, adjoint. Their total of 11,000 square feet. The building on the left is 4,000 square feet. And it is the new home of the second branch of the Savvy Apple preschool. In addition to being a principal in Two Tides Development, Matthew is co-owner of the Savvy Apple preschool. And their first and only branch is in the Port Royal area of Beaufort, the city of Beaufort. Is that correct, Matt?
Town of Port Royal.
It's the town of Port Royal. The Savvy Apple was founded in 2014. It is enormously successful and has a student body of approximately 64 students, ranging from one-year-old to pre-kindergarten. And a waiting list of about a year to get in. So on the right side of the property, or the western portion, we have a commitment from a very successful restaurant in Bluffton called the Olive and the Fig. That's a 3,500-square-foot element, leaving two smaller units in the middle. The one next to the Savvy Apple is 2,000 square feet. And the one next to the Fig and Olive is 1,500 square feet. So if we can switch to the next rendering. Okay, so now we are on the western side of the, of Argent Boulevard, looking at the Olive and Fig and looking down to the east at the end, the other end of the building where the Savvy Apple will be located. To my, to the right-hand side, but just off the rendering, is the one and only entrance to the property. So there will be a single curb cut off of Argent Road in that wooded area that was up on the screen previously. We have abundant parking on the site. We have encroached on no wetlands on the site. The entire project is being built on uplands with an excess of parking of nine spaces beyond the required 44. So, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, either myself or Matt.
Thank you. We'll open up the questions, council questions, with Mr. Mearsman.
First off is, I love Olive and Fig. But, you know, my concern is, is the preschool. Argent Boulevard's a nightmare. It's beyond a nightmare to me. And I think everybody realizes that now. Having a preschool with only one entrance and exit, and 64 students, I'm going to say over 120 ins and outs per day would be a reasonable thought. That worries me, safety-wise. You know, that's a lot of traffic. And what you have there, the timing, the restaurants won't be busy when the preschool is during the day. That's good. But just the thought of that much traffic in and out of the preschool worries me. I would almost prefer two curb cuts than having only one.
Let me make a few comments and then turn it over to...
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick reminder. This zoning, they do have an intent with their property, so we did want to have full disclosure. But we do have to remember that anything under the general commercial zoning would be permissible on the site, once it's zoned that. So this is, so if it's annexed into the city, zoned general commercial, then we will, there could be a variety of other uses that staff review committee will have to make sure that the proper access and parking is available for. They can't get a zoning permit for, even if they switch out businesses, if they don't have that in place.
Yeah, I think what you have, it's a wonderful concept. I think it's a great idea. I just, please address the ingress and egress to make it as safe as possible, please.
Let me just say a few words and then I'll turn it over to Matt about what happens and how the students arrive and how their parents leave. What's not shown here is that parents with the students will arrive at this main entrance. And you'll see a two-way street going past the Olive and the Fig. Once they get beyond the Olive and the Fig, they make a left. And if we can go back to the other rendering? Yeah, they go in that, in that road, the blue SUV, yes. But prior to that, there are five parking spaces next to Savvy Apple. And they don't all arrive at the same time. They dribble in over probably an hour, hour and a half period.
It's more of like a two-hour period and it prevents stacking that you would normally see elements of school. Currently, up in Port Royal, we operate on a very busy road, Paris Island Gateway. And we have a rear access, we're set back off the road currently. So this design kind of gives us that same thing, pushing our drop-off away from the road and preventing, giving that safety.
So we'll work with staff and the city's traffic engineer and make sure that we don't crowd Argent anymore to this already crowded.
That's all I ask, thank you.
Mrs. Gudzimansky.
So you just said a few seconds ago that there's abundant parking.
Yes.
I've been to Olive and Fig. And that parking lot where they're at, they're always packed. So lunch, and they soak dinner. You absolutely need a reservation to get to that restaurant. And when this opens here, it's going to be packed every day. So my concern is, when you say you have nine more than the requested 44, that's...
Yeah, I could speak to that.
Okay.
Okay. So I too like the Olive and the Fig. And it is packed, and you do need a reservation. But there's a lot more going on in that shopping center than there will be here. Probably three times as much. And this is about 11,000 square feet, four units. The Olive and the Fig will have the benefit of the parking spaces allocated to the Savvy Apple. They only compete, well, they don't compete at all. The kids will all be home when the dinner rush starts. So we have allocated to those, with your ordinance, four spaces per thousand square feet. The Olive and the Fig has 3,500, so that's 14 spaces. Savvy Apple also has 16 spaces because they're 4,000 square feet. So we have 30 parking spaces allocated to the Olive and Fig. With an average of two and a half or three per car, there won't be enough tables in there, you know, to satisfy that, the parking required.
So you have parking behind that building?
Yes. Yeah. There's, if we can go back to the other rendering? Yeah, there's, I think there's a dozen spaces. A dozen spaces across the front. To the right of the red car, to the right, is a two-lane parking lot with the abundant spaces. And then in the back of the building, there are nine. So we think that the use of a school and a busy restaurant makes sense. They're really going to be needing the spaces at different times. Now, we can't tell you what will be in the other two units, but they're small units and will likely not require many parking spaces. Usually, the smaller units with 2,000 square feet, 1,500 square feet, only have a customer or two or three at one time. You know, like a dry cleaner or, yeah. So I think we've got a good plan here that's going to work with Argent Boulevard and not make it worse than it is.
And I don't know how worse you can make it. It's just one long dead traffic cell. You know, and adding more traffic to that, it's to me, it's like, it's like throwing, like somebody said, throwing Molotov cocktail on gasoline, you know, on fire.
Do our best to keep the fire at a minimum.
Mrs. Carroll.
I think it's a good plan. Like I say, the school is not competing with the restaurant. And you've also got your overflow parking in the back, so I think it's a good plan. Yep.
So you're not anticipating any of the students driving to school?
No. Just the little battery kitty cars.
Okay, well, keep them off Argent Boulevard, please. So my first question, of course, which I think's been addressed, and it's the curb cuts on Argent Boulevard. As everybody's expressed here, that is a problem. But there's a part B to that. With the recent transportation sales tax referendum, the voters have devoted $57 million to the improvement of Argent Boulevard. And my concern, as we approve things like that, how do we improve Argent Boulevard if we've just put something right up on Argent Boulevard? So, and there's no answer to that, I understand that. But that is a concern of mine, is that... But, that is a concern of mine, is that we, we already have a lot built there. How do we fix it? So, this goes to my next question. We can help make this safer, not safe, safer, if we have a couple of things. Number one, we have right-in, right-out only. Because once people come out of there, particularly if there's only one curb cut, and even if there's two, if they come out of there and they're making left-hand turns onto what is now a 55 mile an hour road, we're gonna make a bad road worse.
So, this is a straight zoning request? So, we can't put that kind of condition on it? It's, it's just what's allowed in the general commercial. Staff hasn't reviewed this plan yet. They just have rendering and a, and a plan that they want to do. But, we can, when staff review committee reviews it, we'll make sure that it meets all the safety requirements. But, we can't put the condition on a straight zoning. Maybe Prina can add to that?
No, I, I understand that. But, you know, we're asked to approve zoning and then turning over the hard decisions to staff. And that's always a concern. We've expressed this on, on other projects as well. You know, once we give up, we, this council gives up our decision-making authority. So, my question is, how do, and I'll go to my second question on, as far as Argent Boulevard. And that is, I know SEDOT does not like acceleration lanes. But, at deceleration lanes, we already see at places like Dreamscape Drive, the lack of deceleration lanes make that road ever more dangerous. So, my question to staff is, and maybe Madam Attorney, how do we, we, the council, assure ourselves that if we give this zoning, that these things like decel lanes and having right-in, right-outs, these kind of concerns, that we make you adhere to them?
We don't have a, because it's a straight zoning, we don't have a traffic study yet. So, we don't know what that's going to recommend. So, I really can't respond to that right now.
Can I respond?
Certainly, this is a, we're just trying to come up with the right answers.
You know, we will work very closely with staff. And Mayor will keep you in the loop. We need to do a traffic study. I'm sure the counts are gonna be similar to the nightmare you've described. And, and if, if we needed deceleration lane, we, we'll just do it. Or an acceleration lane. The, the right, the right-out is certainly, you know, one solution. But, it, but it has, it has its own problems. Anyone living west of there needs to figure out where they're gonna make the K-turn or encroach in somebody's parking lot, you know, to make a U-turn. So, you know, we, we can consider all these options. But, I think we should do it with your traffic engineer, with staff. We'll bring in a traffic engineer as well. And I will certainly keep you in the process.
Understood. And you've heard everybody up here. We're, we continue to add stuff on Argent Boulevard and continue to increase the dangers of a road that's all right. Can you show us where Village Road is?
It's, it's off the map. It's about a half a mile, at least down, to the south of this.
Down towards...
It's right by Shortcut.
Right. So, what was it, yesterday? There was another accident in Village Road in Argent Boulevard? I don't know how bad that was. But, that's not the first one there. So, I have no problem with the project. I, I think it's great. And I'm sure my neighbors in Sun City will love to go to Olive and Fig. And they'll probably be the first ones in an accident getting there. But, the... You know, I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, you know, the, the safety of that road. And I have one other question. And perhaps is Chief Woodward here? Scott here? Can I have one of the chiefs here for a question?
Mayor Scott, you have a standing mother to run here, but I can't...
If I may ask a question, you have other property joining this?
Yeah, we own the five acres in the back.
That's already in. So, would it be ever possible that another access would be off of Shortcut Road then?
So, you don't own this?
You don't own that parcel?
We own the five acres.
You're, okay, you're in the backside, okay.
That's gone from bad to worse. The chief, with the presence of a school on Argent Boulevard, you know, we've been trying for literally years to get that speed limit reduced. Is that, if, if a school is on that road, does that help our chances of getting that speed reduced?
So, speaking anecdotally, yes, sir, it checks a lot of boxes. The increased traffic plus the lighted school zones, which would have to go in, which is part of South Carolina state law, would at least help governor those intersections during the most peak times. Because a drop-off would be my thought process.
So, if, if a school goes in there and we have signs like in front of Royal Live Oaks that say 25 miles an hour when school is in session, will that, will this trigger that type of signing?
So, even if, even as a preschool, you can still sometimes get school zones lit? That's dependent on South Carolina Department of Transportation?
I want us to be careful. I don't want us to guess at what may or may not happen.
No, I was just offering that, but I was supposed to, I was not speaking...
No, no, it's, it's, we'd have to work with DOT to see if that is something that they would install.
I just...
And it also goes to, they've talked to these businesses, but we're not approving the businesses in this location. We're approving zoning. So, even though they've told us that's who's likely to go there, it could be a completely different business by the time they actually go to build it and lease it. That's the reality of it. So, we've got to look at it from a zoning standpoint and what that zoning allows, because that's where we're at now.
If I may also offer another consideration, I guess. This is zoned commercial in Jasper County. So, what I have suggested, which many developers wouldn't, is a kind of collaboration with staff, with city's traffic engineer, with our traffic engineer, and with you, Mayor. That is, I think, a better mousetrap than are going to Jasper County to build the project.
We're, we're in the process of closing that mousetrap forever. So, you know, those kinds of things don't ever happen again. So, please, that is one possibility that is one you don't want to bring up to me.
I, I was just putting it out there.
No, I, I know. And, and we, we don't want that. We're, we're looking to, yes, mea culpa, understood.
Mea maximacopa.
Mea maximacopa. All right, so, I understand, we're just approving the zoning. You understand the concerns of this council. And having said all those things, I will now, counsel, if there are no other questions by counsel, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions for the council at this time? At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes. This is first reading of an ordinance 2025-06-18E.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve 2025-06-18D.
We have a motion, do we have a second? E, E as in Edward.
E as in Edward.
I'm sorry.
E as in Edward.
He is in Edward.
Yeah.
Second then, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by council or the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Next, this is an ordinance to rezone the same property from general commercial in Jasper County to general commercial in the city of Hardyville. Which means, basically, if we approve the annexation, then this is B. We end up, this is the approval of the new zoning under the city of Hardyville. Mr. Gruber?
Yes, sir, no, thank you. You did 90% of my job there. The, the annexation statutes require that if you are going to bring property into your municipality, first you have to vote on bringing it in. And then, once you've brought it in, you have to assign it a zoning designation. So, this goes hand in glove with the previous matter that you were discussing. And as we mentioned, it is currently zoned general commercial under Jasper County's zoning designations. And we are proposing to bring it in under general commercial zoning regulations within the city.
Thank you. So, Mr. Carroll, do you have any further questions?
No, sir, I think it's a good project. And it seems like he wants to work with, with the council and the staff. So, I don't have any questions.
Mrs. Guzman.
I have no questions, sir, because we're approving the facility, we're not approving the project for sale, so I have no questions.
Mr. Mearsman.
No questions, I agree with what John has said.
We are only approving zoning, and I understand that. And I have a, a lot of confidence in our staff and our city manager. You understand what our concerns are. And I would only ask that particularly with Argent and anything on Argent, that this council, even though they're not required, that it be brought before this council. Can we have that commitment? Mr. Gruber?
Yes, sir. And I, I would take it even a step further than that, so that the public understands kind of what our expectations are, which are, to the extent that we can, we're going to try to limit access onto Argent Boulevard and reduce the number of curb cuts. We're going to encourage interconnectivity amongst parcels to reduce those number of curb cuts. And then, to the extent that access does need to occur, we're gonna actually try to design it to not only incorporate future anticipated improvements to that area, but also, to the extent that DOT will allow, try to make it as safe as possible.
Thank you, thank you. So, counsel, if we have, if we vote positively, we have staff's commitment that even though not legally required, that council be brought into the considerations that are done when the master plan comes in. Okay. Having said that, I'd now offer the public any comments or questions. All right, I'd like a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to ordinance 2025-06-18-F.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-06-18-F.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by council or the public? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, second reading again is in July. Next is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the Third Amendment to an agreement of consolidation and transfer between BJWSA and the city of Hardyville dated January 17, 2002, and other matters related there, too. This is ordinance 2025-06-18-G. Mr. Gruber, please.
Yes, sir, I, I will do my best to try to be brief in summarizing this, this item. Historically, the city, at one point in time, owned and operated its own water and sewer services. A number of years ago, the city decided to sell that system to the Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. As a part of that transaction, the city received a number of capacity credits for both water and sewer that it has been using for public infrastructure projects over the years. In addition to that, there was an agreement that if the city paid for and installed infrastructure of a water or sewer nature, that the city would receive credits equivalent to a dollar-for-dollar of the cost of installing that equipment. Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer is proposing to amend that agreement to essentially do, do something for them. With the way that it's structured now, if the city does a million and a half dollar project, that's a million and a half dollars that's a hit to Beaufort Jasper that they may not be aware of or budgeting for. So, rather than reimbursing us on a dollar-for-dollar basis, what they'd like to do is annually allocate $200,000 to the city. And it's not just Hardyville. I believe they're looking at doing this for all of their municipal partners. And that way, they can budget consistently for what those credits may need to be. This is something that we've looked at. We've looked at it from the standpoint of our historical investment in water and sewer infrastructure, what we use on a typical basis. And I think this is something that we do support because it continues to further our relationship with Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. It allows us to tap into the credits that they're willing to provide on an annual basis. And it does not eliminate the existing credits that we have to expend from that prior transaction. If there's any details about the actual agreement itself, be happy to turn it over to Prina, and she can discuss those for you. But, that, that should give you hopefully an idea of what's being proposed and why it's being proposed.
Okay, well, if there's any questions, we'll, we'll defer them to Mrs. Mainz. Mr. Mearsman, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm relying on staff, that you've done your research, you've done the homework on this. This is in the best interest of the residents of Hardyville, correct?
Yes, sir. I, I believe it, it accomplishes our goals based upon our historical practices. And for at least the foreseeable future, any of the needs that we might have come up would be covered within this program. And I forgot, it also gives me an opportunity to kind of parlay this into an additional conversation. So, tonight, you have first reading of an ordinance that authorizes changes to this, this program. Additionally, we'll need to approve a resolution updating our intergovernmental agreement with Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer to reflect the terms that you're going to approve as part of this ordinance. So, if you move this forward, when it comes up for second reading, you will also see a resolution on your agenda to update the IGA so that the two line up. And within that resolution, it will reference that Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority's commitment of providing $500,000 towards the Exit 8 sewer project is tied into this program. And so, the way that they're proposing to approach this would be to take last year's allocation, this year's allocation, and then little on top as an incentive for the city to agree to these program changes in exchange for providing $500,000 towards that Exit 8 sewer project. So, wanted to make sure that that was clear, that this is in addition to something else that would come forward if you feel comfortable with it. Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Guzman.
I have no questions, sir, because Josh just explained it in great detail, so...
Mr. Carroll.
One thing, when you said historical perspective, whatever, I guess what you're saying is that very rarely are we gonna have a go over $200,000 a year. So, the city is not gonna be...
Correct. It's also a great opportunity to point out that in the agreement, the language authorizes credits to be used for public infrastructure projects that we would pursue affordable workforce, housing, or other projects as agreed to by both the city and Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you. And I, I think one other thing that I, I think it's important to point out to everyone that BJWSA, and we have a representative here, but this is something that they've worked through all the other jurisdictions in their service area and, and... in their service area, and so this is something that... It's not just here, but it's a top-level program that all the jurisdictions are going to benefit from. So that's why I think this is a good move for all of us. So having said that, I'd like to open it up to the public. Are there any comments or questions by council, by the public? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to the first reading of ordinance 2025-06-18-G.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments or questions by council or the public? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. First reading passes. Second meeting will be in July. And now, what we've all been waiting anxiously to speak about, we will have the first reading of the ordinance to consider an initial master plan known as Riverport Parkway North and Riverport Parkway Phase 1. This is 1,000, almost 1,100 acres, and it is in the Riverport PDD. This is ordinance number 2025-06-18-H. Mr. Gruber, please.
Yes, sir. So this matter came before the Planning Commission, I think, last month at their meeting. Yep. And received recommendation of approval coming out of Planning Commission. We then held a workshop on this matter to kind of look a little bit more detailed at their proposal. And so it's now before you tonight on first reading. I'll ask that staff come up and just kind of give an overview about the specifics of the initial master plan itself.
Certainly. We did a little abbreviated presentation this time. So again, it is located kind of in between Purysburg Church, Deerfield Roads over here. This is the proposed initial master plan. It does show the connection to Exit 3 as well as the 1,900 proposed single-family residential units. Again, it's just, it's 1,074 acres and the access to the existing out parcels. All driveway access will be maintained during this process. There are two full access points proposed on Riverport Parkway North and two access points on Church Road. One is EMS-only, so fire would be able to access at that point. The open space and connectivity plan, there are two amenity campuses as well as some pocket parks spread throughout the development. They're shown in green. 51.13 total proposed open space with 8.78% active open space sidewalks provided throughout the development. There's a 50-foot perimeter buffer at a minimum. The properties adjacent to the residential area along Beechwood Drive, it ranges between 70 feet and 88 feet of buffer. And Planning Commission had a three-to-one vote to approve with conditions that the roads are being addressed, and the workshop was held to address public comment.
Thank you. Would anyone from the applicant like to add?
Mayor, members of council, my name is Felipe Toledo with Thomas and Haddon, and I'm representing the Grandland Brothers for the IMP of Riverport North. So, let me go. So as Katie was explaining, the property is currently seeking 1,900 DUs for this IMP. It's surrounded by Purysburg Road, Future Parkway North, and connecting to Exit 3. These are improvements that are currently under bidding process. Exit 3 and 95 have been already bid by DOT and in the current process of starting it with the city to getting award of those two projects. So ahead of the development, this infrastructure is getting put in place. As far as access points that were described earlier, there's four access points to the property, two on Future Riverport Parkway North and two on Church Road. One of them, the Beechwood Drive, will be an EMS-only with a click-to-enter gate that is only allowed for members of the city, like fire department, to access through the development. No residents could go through that gate. This is to be sensible to the community and not put traffic in an area that is not desirable and not impact those neighbors. So the main access would be from Church Road this year where it says access point six. The development currently had, we have conducted a traffic study as part of this application and have identified improvements in certain intersections, one of them being Church Road and Deerfield Road. And this will have to take place at the moment that we reach 500 COs on the development. The other intersection that's currently being studied by the city for improvements is 17 and Deerfield Road, and that will also contribute to the improvements of the level of service of the area as well. As far as stormwater development, will meet all the required state and local ordinance and control and attenuate the run of, through use of ponds in interconnected pond system and providing runoff at a less rate or equal rate that exists. Other than that, the utilities for this development are being served by Beaufort Jasper. There's a 36-inch main that goes through Purysburg Road that will connect to the development. As well, in Church Road, there is an 8-inch line that Beaufort Jasper has control of that we will connect to as well. There will be two pump stations on the side that will ultimately discharge into the treatment plan that Beaufort Jasper has here on Church Road. Other than that, I leave it up to you if you have any questions.
Thank you. I think before I open it up to the council, at the workshop, we asked a developer to respond to some of the requests from the public from a meeting that we had back in April, and we invited certain representatives from the area. So I'm going to give those responses that I received a couple of hours ago for, so everyone knows, both the council, I think I gave everybody a copy. The road improvements at the intersection of Church and Purysburg. How close? Getting better? Purysburg. That's harder than transect. Now, I'm going to bridge what I'm going to read to you just so you understand what they're going to contribute. But the timing and everything and when that happens, anybody who wants a copy of this, you're more than welcome. Those improvements, the developer will contribute $100,000 towards the cost. The cemetery improvements that are needed, drainage, new concrete walls and everything. At the closing of the first sale on Riverport North, because the landowner sells it to a builder, okay? And the builder builds. At that point, the developer will escrow $100,000 from the sale for the cemetery improvements. So we have $100,000 for the intersection and $100,000 for improving the cemetery. The, we asked to improve the Marine Rescue Building. Again, at the sale, the first to the residential builder, the developer will escrow another $100,000 for these projects. Millstone Landing, which is a master plan and changing it into a recreation, again, same as number three, the developer will escrow $100,000 from, for these projects. The next request was new roads from Purysburg to Church Road. The developer is currently working on bike and pedestrian sideways for this location. So that has to be worked into the plan. Historic preservation. We asked about setting aside areas. And again, this was all part of the workshop, and anybody's welcome to this. The developer is willing to pay for 10 interpretive signs within the park at $1,500 per sign. For item number three, which are interpretive signs within the park, again, $1,500 per sign for 10. The developer will preserve historic sites. The developer will set aside acreage for Park near Millstone Landing. And the developer feels it is a responsibility of the community and city to seek additional grants, and is willing to cooperate. So we will have the obligation to seek grants to work on these historic preservation goals. Union Landing, developed and open to the public, the developer will escrow $50,000 for the benefit of Union Landing. The preservation within the development area, preserve wildlife areas, save space for a school. The developer is preserving all wildlife areas within the developing, the development. And the developer is, will set aside property for a school at Riverport as well. So those are the commitments from the developer, which I'm going to do a quick add. One, two, three, four. It comes out to $450,000 plus 20 signs at $1,500 apiece, plus the other preservation efforts that they have committed to. These commitments by the developer were made at the request of local residents. And this is their response to those requests. So since that's now in the public record, I'm going to open it up to council questions and start with Mr. Mearsman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for prefacing with that. The questions. The intersection of Purysburg Road and Church Road, is that within the city's boundaries?
No.
The intersection of Church and 316, not in the city's... Is that in the city?
Where?
No. So neither of these roads are currently within the city. They remain in Jasper County and the state DOT control. It's nice that you want us to give us, dedicate money to it, but we don't have that control over those two roads. My, I have a great concern over that. This development is going to have family homes. Am I right there? So there's going to be children accessing Church Road going to school? Would that be a reasonable thing? And there's no approved timeline right now for those developments at those intersections. Church Road and 316, they're, I believe we have by the... The process has to start by the 500th home?
Mr. Mearsman, point of order, it's 321.
321, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
At 321, at 500 homes. I'm not happy with that number. We all know how long it takes to have DOT engineer, design, approve a project. At 250 homes, we would be lucky to have that intersection approved by the 500th home. We all know. I mean, it's taken years to get anything done on 278, and it's still not done. We have, we're going to have the residents using Church Road. You're going to have schoolchildren using Church Road. I would like to see, before this would ever come back for second reading, some type of proof of contact with the developer, with the state DOT, to begin that process of improving that intersection. I don't want to wait till the 250th home and then you start this process, because then you're two or three years down the road. It needs to be done at the beginning of the process.
Amen.
Like I said, we don't have any control over those two roads. But we do have control over allowing you to go forward with this project until it's done. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. You answered a lot of my other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mearsman. Mrs. Guzman?
Mayor, if I may allow to provide some color to your question.
Of course, another $100,000 now.
Huh?
No.
No. You say correctly that the roads are controlled by DOT. So as part of the IMP, which is six, the zoning first, right? To be able to come forward with development permits, we have provided a traffic study, right? So externalities and improvements have been identified. As part of the, when you move forward with this, part of the DA identified contributions to fund those improvements, right? So as the development moves forward, it will fund those improvements. Engineering has to happen beforehand, and then that will be as part of the development to cure that engineer and go through the proper channels to get a permit. So that's just to answer the engineering component and how it's getting funded. But, and that's just to add to your question.
But we still do not have control of those roads.
You're correct. Those are DOT controls.
Giving us, offering us the money is great, except we don't have that control. And I don't know what the timeline is with DOT. That's why I'm asking that this process needs to start now.
We can definitely reach out to DOT and start...
Before you come back with second reading, I'd like to see something to prove that. I don't want to, I don't want to say...
Important to know that these conversations could be preliminary because to have solid conversation does have to be...
It could be preliminary, but at least it's a preliminary. It's the safety of all these folks sitting here that I'm concerned about. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Guzman?
All these ponds here, the water on this wetland system flows through here. Eventually make it this way. As part of this project, there have been improvements on the conveyance here that allow all that water to flow ultimately to the river. So all that, and again, the stormwater has to be designed to meet city ordinance and state ordinance, so we're required to attenuate all that flow. So it's not, it will be slowly released through the system.
The reason I asked was, every time we build development, we create a huge impervious surface. People are going to be washing their cars, changing the oil, doing all kinds of stuff, and all that drain, when it rains, all that water is going to go into the sewer system, into the water, and then out into, discharged out into the water system. I'm very concerned about that.
Me, too.
Also, I really don't want the folks that are living there right now to have to pay the price for people that are... Y'all are planning to come five, 10 years down the road, that they are not going to pay the price for the people that are coming down the road, because they're already here. I mean, some of these folks are, these are legacy properties. Some of these folks are living on legacy properties. And I don't think it's fair to put them into an inconvenient situation because you want this project to go over there without the normal stormwater controls. Now, I've, we've seen a lot of developments come down here, and I don't agree with the, what you just said about it's going to meet the regular, whatever the regular standards. I usually ask for the developer to address flooding at the 100-year flood level, which means your ponds are going to be deeper to... means your ponds are going to be deeper to prevent overtopping. Your culverts are going to be bigger to help all that water go out. And then also, when that water goes out into the regular waterways, there has to be some kind of mechanism to make sure that all the junky stuff that's coming from this development is going to go into the waterways and pollute our streams and rivers and other waters around the area. It is, to me, it is -- I don't agree with that. I cannot -- I can't support something that does not have better restrictions in place when it comes to that sort of thing, because I'm one of those people, and these guys are probably sick of hearing me say this, because I always say, prevention is better than the fix. So I would like to see deeper ponds, bigger culverts, and then the stormwater to meet the 100-year criteria. Because I don't think the folks that are sitting here should be penalized if what you're building over there is going to create more stormwater and more impervious surfaces, that their homes are going to get flooded as a result of this. Because I am of the school where your home is your biggest investment, and sometimes it's your life investment, and some of these folks have been living in those houses. I think they were probably born in there. And to have those things flooded because you put your development there and didn't take the precautions, I think that's totally unsatisfactory. So that's -- that was my concern.
I understand. So there's a lot to unpack there, but if I hear you correct, your main concern comes to stormwater and how that would affect.
Yes, the flooding, how are you going to mitigate the stormwater issues and prevent flooding in the surrounding areas as well?
So, one of the things to consider as well, and given that majority of our -- the neighbors to this development live in Church Road, right? This development, all their outfalls are flowing downstream that development. So none of the outfalls of these ponds are designed to outfall into the system that Church Road currently discharged. They're going to flow eventually down this way through the wetland system and make it eventually into the river. So as far as this development putting water on the -- on their backyards, or on their homes, or on their roads, this is not designed to do that. So that addresses that part. As far as the adding additional requirements of design events and things like that, I mean, our -- we are bounded by city and state ordinance, so we have to comply with that. So I'm -- I can speak to whether we can adhere to know that, we'll definitely, I can say that we will adhere to state and local requirements that have been imposed for the program and other developments as well. But that's kind of what the law that we have to follow, right?
Right.
So that's our -- and making deeper ponds, just for a technical, it doesn't, I guess, address the concern of water quality.
Of overtopping.
But I will -- but I will add this, the ponds are intended to be wet for this development. So that's a factor that helps to keep the water quality, because that gives time for sediment to settle on the ponds, and then when it comes to another rain, you try to put up clean-up water, because state ordinance requires us to design that way.
Okay. So I understand when you say that state ordinances, you know, you follow state and city ordinances. Well, I've -- we've had several developers come through here, and they've all gone above and beyond state and local ordinances to prevent flooding. So you're no different.
No, and I'm not saying that we are the exception. I'm just saying, I, as the representative of the developer, can make that agreement. Definitely, we can have the developer and talk to him and get an agreement on that. That's what I want to state there.
Okay. Thank you.
Finish?
Hmm?
Mr. Carroll.
I've got several issues. Number one, we keep talking about the stormwater runoff going into the river. All of our water supply from Beaufort Jasper Water comes from that Savannah River. And for the ones of us who have lived here for forever, just about, was another neighboring river that used to be designated as pristine, and that was New River. And now it's no longer graded as pristine because of stormwater runoff, some of the other things. And you're talking about this number of houses and this amount of runoff, and we keep hearing this going to be designed and running Savannah River. I have a serious problem worrying about Savannah River, number one. But the number two issue, this is a simple issue that I asked last time, if you remember in the workshop, are you familiar with Church Road?
Yes, sir.
All we're talking about, all these people and all this -- Church Road is already at certain times of the day overwhelmed. I don't know what's going to happen when all these people come, and it can't be widened, it can't have turn lanes, because there's houses there. I just don't see how you're going to be able to address the traffic and the situation with Church Road, all that Savannah River. Something's going to have to be -- something done for me to be assured about that.
So if I hear you correctly, the water pollution and the traffic.
And traffic on Church Road.
So as far of concern of water intake for Beaufort Jasper, water intake is upstream of the location, the outflow of this development. So you're -- sorry if I may speak.
Please, please, the public will have plenty of time. Let's have the courtesy.
Eventually make to the wetland system.
Go ahead.
To the wetland system into the river, like pointed out earlier. But the intake of the Savannah River for the Beaufort Jasper is upstream of this development. Directly putting it upstream of the intake is not what this development will be doing. As far as your concern of Church Road, what I can say is, as we looked at the traffic study and traffic distribution, the way this was analyzed, right, this will have about a breakdown of 40% of the total volume of traffic generated going towards the direction of the city. The other 60% will be routed through Exit 3. If one may say, okay, but what happened with the person that lives from here and tried to go the other way around because he thinks his church is faster? If you just look at from a straight center of gravity or mass of this development, and you run those numbers, you'll come to find out the shortest, quickest way to get to Exit 3 is not going out the development to Church Road and then come around and then exit 3, right? So, again, this development has not identified that the traffic significantly or at all comes through Church Road. Again, couldn't reality be persons that do that? Absolutely, because that's human nature. But as far as what we're using the tools to predict traffic and try to address planning, that's not the case, at least from what we analyzed.
I don't know if that answered your question, Council.
Well, I think let's -- well, I think, John.
Yes, sir.
I don't think you understood what Mr. Carroll was asking. He was not concerned about the water coming in. What he was concerned about, and I think Ms. Guzman too, is the water and the contaminated waters that are coming from this development, they don't want it ended up into the Savannah River. And that's their question, John, am I -- you know, and I don't think you answered that.
Okay, apologies, I misunderstood.
You told him where the water was going to come in from, but what they're concerned about is where the water -- we don't want Savannah River contaminated by the addition of 1,900 homes. That's the question. How do you prevent that?
So, yes, apologies for misunderstanding your question. This development, and one thing I mentioned earlier, throughout the whole wetland permit that has already been granted for development, an agreement has been signed for monitoring to the water quality of the system. So that applies for construction and post-construction. So those monitoring systems will be in place, so we'll be able to, if there's spikes, and wait to address, right? So during construction, when it's responsible for developers, there will be monitoring stations, and we'll be able to tell the levels, and that will address that component. Post-development, the system on itself is designed by using the wet ponds to attenuate and control the sediment concentration coming out of the development. If, whatever reason, there's a spill or something out of normal operation of the stormwater system, those stations may pick up those spikes, and then the proper authorities can take measurements to address that spill or particular contaminant that is out of the norm.
Did that answer your question, John? Couple of questions for me. I asked at the workshop, number one, was what's the difference, the distance? If you make that map a little bigger.
Yeah. And the battle of your blood.
So Phase 1, and it was alluded to before, is 500 homes.
Correct.
And that's where the trigger is for the improvements of Church Road and 321. All right. And I asked at the workshop, there's going to be one access point to that first 500 homes, which is the number six there, right?
Correct.
And I asked, what's the distance from six to three? And I was told that it's about 1,800 feet. Okay? So that's about six football fields, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So since there's only one access point for the first 500 homes, it is likely that these, this first 500 homes will not be going, other than some isolated circumstances, will not be going down the length of Church Road. It will be going the 1,800 feet from that access point to 321. And that's the reason I asked for that, because I want to know where these first 500 homes, what part of Church Road is it going to affect? And it's going to affect the 1,800 feet between six and three. So I think that's important to note, and that these first 500 homes, where we have trigger points, we're anticipating a certain amount of things that happen. First of all, and I'm going back to what Mr. Mearsman said, we would like to have DOT's approval on an initial plan for Church and 321. Now, put a little timetable to this. It's going to take you 18 months to get a permit to start on this. Is that correct? Is that -- I understand.
If you count engineering and all that.
States take in about 18 months for permitting. So that gives us 18 months, and at, I'm going to say, 100 a year, and I say that based on other developments we have going on in the city, 100 would be an optimistic rate of sale. We're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of six and a half years before we get to the 500 home. Now, there's reason for it. Back to Mr. Mearsman's question. We would like to see a -- an approved DOT plan before that, we get to that point. And we would like to see some initial start on that plan by the time this 500 homes come from. Mr. Mearsman, does that satisfy your question?
No, I want 250.
You want 250.
And then there's 300.
The other thing that this development is contingent upon is the completion of Exit 3, because what we're approving here, what you're asking us to approve, is 1,900 homes. Phase 1 is only 500, and you're not going to go to Phase 2 until that's done. But all the other 1,400, which you're asking us to approve, is pretty much contingent upon finishing Exit 3. So what I'd like to propose is that we have some percentage, and I'll leave this to the applicant and Mr. Gruber, within that time, and we're talking six and a half years, I would like to see at least a high percentage of Exit 3 completed, and certainly totally completed by the time we get to that six and a half years point. But I'd like to see, make sure that Exit 3 is near completion before we go on to the other phases. Okay? So I'd like, Mr. Gruber, if you could work that out, that timetable, but I think to say, before they go on to Phase 2, that Exit 3 be complete, because we're going to be talking about a six and a half year approximate build-out to that first 500. I don't think that's unreasonable to expect. The last thing that I think is very important, and I'm going to ask you, and maybe the developer needs to answer this, is this part of the tax increment financing zone? It's not. None of this is. Okay. So the -- none of the taxes come to pay off the loan of Exit 3?
Correct.
Only the TIF zone takes care of that. Okay. All right. That's all I have. I think there's -- there might be some things to work out between council as to 250 or 500, but let's go now to public comment before we go on to -- and that's here, what the public has to say before we go on to any further. Ladies, whoever wants to speak, please come up and form a line, so we don't have to fight each other as to who's next. I would ask, as we did at the workshop, I know there's a lot of residents here, I ask that you please, we don't need 30 people to say the same thing. What I will ask for a show of hands after each speaker to find out if you agree with that speaker. And you can disagree with this lady, she's very nice. But just for the sake of everyone's time, the council will get the point if we see a show of hands and we hear each objecting or comment once. So please state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, Mayor Williamson, Council. My name is Allison Butler-Carson, and I live on Piersburg Road, right next to, it's Piersburg Memorial Cemetery. I think it may be known as Green Cemetery as well. I live, we live right there, there at that intersection between Church Road and Piersburg Road. I just need to make three quick points. The first is changing the name of Piersburg Road to Riverport Parkway. Was mentioned by the developer, developers in some of the information we reviewed before the meeting, and at the request of developers and owners, 4,600 acres in Piersburg were surveyed by Gannett and others in 2011, and the survey included a section of the Piersburg Road. I did not have access to the 2011 survey, but according to Piersburg researcher and archaeologist Daniel Elliott, the 2011 report noted that Piersburg Road was deemed an eligible historic resource. So even Riverport's own consultant recognized the historical significance of Piersburg Road. I ask that you not rename Piersburg Road, but instead choose to honor its historic value to the local residents, as well as its association with national history. Second point is the traffic impact analysis report that we obtained from the city website states the following. Based on the analysis, the two-way controlled intersection of 321 and Church Road is projected to operate at an acceptable volume-to-capacity ratio until approximately 250 dwelling units have been completed. After 250 units, it is recommended to install a roundabout or signalize the intersection. Pardon me. The developers have requested a PDD variance, which would push the 250 units to 500 before they are required to address 321 Church Road intersection. While the TIA points to other scenarios that could support the developer's position, the TIA the TIA authors concluded, "The threshold will largely be dependent on the location of the dwelling units and their proximity to the Church Road access. As the developers have expressed their intent to begin construction on Highway 321 and Church Road of their property, addressing the intersection is warranted at the 250th dwelling unit mark. For this reason, we request the council deny this change to their PDD." And my last point is, traffic and design at the intersection of Church Road and Purysburg Road must be addressed before this project moves forward. According to the PDD we obtained from the city website, improvements will stop at Church Road, but include any required improvements to the intersection of Purysburg Road and Church Road from traffic loadings generated by Riverport. The likelihood is great that traffic, particularly semis or tractor-trailers coming from Highway 321 to Exit 3, will significantly increase as a result of the Riverport development. These trucks headed to and from ports, warehouses, or even simply to interstate, excuse me, to access Interstate I-95 will undoubtedly seek to avoid the city of Hardyville and decrease road time by using Purysburg Road. Thus, the potential for damage to our cemeteries, our roads, and our way of life is significant. It's significant. I ask the council to please have a plan in hand to address this issue before the project is allowed to continue. Further efforts to reduce or eliminate heavy traffic from Purysburg Road is necessary. Thank you so much for listening to me, and thank you for your time.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a show of hands. First, don't change the name from Purysburg to Riverport Parkway North. Who's in favor of that? Anyone? Okay. John? Second, the original TIA, which was 250, and my understanding through the documents that there was, the TIA was changed to 500, that's why I quoted 500. You're asking that it does not get, that change from 250 to 500. Who's in favor of that? That's basically what Steve said, yes. So I know his hands up. I'm not committing yet. Okay. So everybody wants it to stay at 250? Everybody with their hands up?
Yes.
Okay. And you're asking that improvements be made to Purysburg and Church intersection, which they committed some money, which I mentioned earlier. Allison, at what point do you expect those to be complete?
I'm sorry, say again?
You're asking that the improvements to Purysburg and Church?
Right.
Be done first?
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of phases here.
Right.
What is your suggestion? At what point?
The sooner the better. Because I can tell you, today alone, today alone, between 8:30 and probably 1:00, I counted over 40 dump trucks, 40, going down Purysburg Road. So you can imagine, I have pictures, so you can imagine what Purysburg Road looks like now, right now. And so...
I just want to make sure I understand what your request is.
Yes.
And, you know, it's...
You know, it's a tough situation. We have two cemeteries. I, for the life of me, when we're having a funeral, and people have nowhere to park, and these people are coming from 321 trying to get to Exit 3, how are these vehicles going to get? They are going to do it. I mean, we see traffic back up in Hardyville now. I can hardly get to my house in Purysburg, because people won't let me through to cross over the tracks to go home. So when they find this path of least resistance, it's going to happen. It just, it is.
Okay.
For me, the sooner the better.
The sooner the better.
Tomorrow?
We can, we can also put in there to help the cemetery, we could put it in the ordinance that they're not allowed to die until they're done. Okay?
There you go. Thanks.
I couldn't live there. Please state your name and address for the public record.
Deborah Butler, 30-year resident of Purysburg, and before that, many years in the city of Hardyville. I want to say to John, concern about the Savannah River has been expressed when they applied for their 401 permit through the state. Savannah Beekeepers and, I think Coastal Conservation opposed the development, and with a letter from the Southern Environmental Law Center, something like that. I couldn't get a copy of those before this meeting, but there have been people concerned, so thank you for expressing that. Also, you know, when you were talking about the concern with the mayor, the traffic with 321, it would be wonderful if this was the only thing that's going on, but it's not. You heard Allison say 40 dump trucks went by today. That's because there's development at the Water Authority and the electric plant down in Purysburg. And so development is coming, and it's coming right through us. So we, that's, this is not the only game in town anymore. And one last thing I want to ask before, really, what I really wanted to say, in one of the plans, they mentioned, the developer mentioned low-income housing. Where is that going to be located, and what does it mean to be low-income in this plan?
Can someone answer that?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Lamar Mercer, Thomason Hutton, here representing the development entity, Grambling. To my knowledge, it, I don't believe that statement or commitment has ever been raised.
It's in some document. I read it, but I don't have it.
If you have, if you have referenced that document, please share it with us. Because we have not made any reference to that, that I'm aware of.
In this plan or in future plan? Because I know they own three or four other properties that are going to be developed.
It's not tied to this. I don't do anything.
So you don't know? Okay.
Well, I do know we've not made any specific reference to it for Riverport.
Including the other properties, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
The other properties between...
I'm confused, what other property?
Oh, you're not aware, they own property between Honey Hill and Church Road, and on the other side of Honey Hill?
No, I'm aware of that.
Oh, okay. Well, that's the other, okay.
I'm completely aware of that.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about.
I'm not aware of that.
Because we have not seen the final development plan, although those were shown during early meetings. But anyway, thank you. Okay. I would like to know if the council, or the planning commission and the council relied on a 2011 survey conducted on behalf of the Riverport developers to assess the cultural and historical artifacts in the Purysburg area under consideration?
Steph, can somebody answer this?
Because my comments, that's all I could find. I couldn't find the actual document, and we talked about this. Is that it?
Let me, let me, let me try to answer, so everyone can get the answer. Yes, Ms. Butler and I did speak earlier, and Katie and I, earlier about that document. That was submitted as part of the Plan Development District, as it's supposed to have been back when this was done in 2011. That is information, and was considered in that in 2011, so it's been in place for a while.
14 years?
Okay, that's what I thought. And I just wanted to make sure, because my comments, I would like to present some information. It's not mine. I collected it. Took me about five minutes on the Internet. This is a report submitted to the National Park Service by Daniel Elliott, who was the principal investigator and author. And I don't know if you can read that or not, but it says, "A Revolutionary War Battlefield at Purysburg, South Carolina." And this is a very complete, comprehensive look at some of the historical significance of Purysburg. And if you're ever interested, if you're a history buff, you should look it up. It's free. All you have to do is Google it, and it comes right up. So there's lots of information here about Purysburg. And Elliott's, and the author Elliott's investigation, he identified a series of 13 battlefields, I call them, I think, loci, L-O-C-I, but anyway, it's areas where artifacts are found. In Purysburg, he found 13 areas. This included a suspected fort area on the west side of Purysburg, and an area of southwestern Purysburg, west of the Purysburg Road. What he, what he found, which is in his report, let me see if I can find it. Actually brought one to leave with you. All of these little red dots, that represents areas where artifacts of the Revolutionary War were found in Purysburg. That's a lot. You can see it's a lot? Yeah, it's a lot. It's interesting for me to note that according to the summary of information, by the way, this was presented to the National Park Service, this report by Elliott, it was presented to them, the American Battlefield Protection Program in 2016. But it's interesting to note that the, Allison mentioned it, Gannett? Allison, what is it? Gannett. The Gannett survey conducted on behalf of the Riverport developers yielded no battlefield-related artifacts. Zero. Zero. This was in 2011, well before the 2016 review. However, Elliott also pointed out that metal detectors, you're going into a battlefield area, you might think you would want to use a metal detector, were not part of Garrett's, Gannett's team's cultural resource survey kit. So they didn't use metal detectors to see if there were any battlefield artifacts. The summary and recommendations from this 2016 report include, currently, no cultural resources in Purysburg are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The findings from the battlefield survey, his 2016 survey project, revealed that this is a glaring omission that needs addressing. A preservation plan should be crafted for the Purysburg battlefield, as considerable archaeological resources associated with the Revolutionary War events have survived Purysburg. I really don't know what to say. I mean, I, other than as a group of elected officials, do you really want to be remembered as the council and mayor that let a chance to protect a piece of American history slip away? Please lead the way to respecting, honoring, and protecting our cultural history. Thank you. By the way, the other things I said at our previous meeting, I still hold true to those, but I didn't think I needed to repeat them. I thought this was really important for you to know. And, oh, I did bring you a copy. This, these are just pages, who do I need to give this to?
Give it to the clerk, please.
It's just, these are some of the battlefield sites that are listed here, and I'll make sure I didn't put any notes. Anyways, just some interesting information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Judy Nettles, and I'm a lifetime resident of Hardyville and the Purysburg area. I was at the first meeting that you offered, invited me to, and I appreciate that. I serve on the cemetery board. I'm the treasurer. The cemetery, I guess, to us, that have been here most of our life, we do have loved ones that are buried there. As I expressed at the first meeting, there's not a lot that can be done. The road bumps right up now to our wall that we just had to replace for the third time. Cars come through there now, don't stop at the stop sign and take out many, many markers. Some from the founding fathers of this city. The McTeer marker that was recently taken out was one of the most expensive ones ever made, and it cost us dearly to have it renovated and put back up. So I appreciate your offer of the money for both the cemeteries to be, I guess, outfitted, upgraded. My question is still, how do you get past the little bit of right-of-way that's there? Cars can't get through if a funeral's going on now. What do we do with that? I know we can put up a new fence. I've written many checks for the new fence. But I just don't understand how we can eliminate the traffic that's going to be coming, especially if we're having a funeral. That's all I have to say, but thank you so much for hearing us.
I think that has to be part of the TIA, not just of the 500 Phase 1, but when we get to the TIA for the entire area, that has to be taken into account. Can you comment on that, Lamar?
Yeah, you're asking for some type of inclusion, of consideration of traffic through Purysburg?
Well, we want to know, I think what they, what's being asked is, you know, there's something happening now.
Sure.
What is the additional traffic impact on that area?
On intersection nine? On intersection, what's number nine?
What's number nine? What's the impact of this 1,900 homes on that intersection?
Nothing changes. There are no improvements called for, because the distribution will utilize Church Road, and it will utilize Riverport Parkway, which I'll come back to that in a moment, Purysburg Road to Exit 3. It's not, I know there's a lot of discussion here about that intersection. I think, based on the comments earlier, there was some commitments for help in that area. One thing, looking at it earlier, the comment was just made about people running that stop sign. There are some rumble strips out there. They need to be replaced. I agree with that. That'd be one thing that would be very, very helpful. So I think that can be, and I think one of the things, back to Mr. Mearsman's point about reaching out to DOT and have a conversation regarding 321, we'll begin that conversation to get you some documentation, so hopefully that will address your concern. That's, we can commit to do that, right? But as part of that, and that's fine, like, we'll do that starting tomorrow. But regarding the Purysburg Church Road, there's no, like, there's no direction, there's no forcing of traffic to go in that area. Matter of fact, again, to address these concerns, I think you'd want to do everything you can to not encourage that to happen, right? So, and I know, because I've been through there several times, right? It's very, very constricted where the cemetery is. I don't really know what you'd do with that, so I don't think you'd do anything to emphasize any traffic going that way. I would be glad to mention the, again, the rumble strips, and maybe DOT has some ideas. But I do want to say, while I'm standing up here in the podium, because I understand the, their naming, we want it to stay as Purysburg Road, the north side, and maybe the south too, also. Frankly, it was, it picked up the name over the last 15 years, just because it's adjacent to the property. And when you said Purysburg Road, it was really hard to make people understand exactly what that meant, or, you know, relative to Riverport, or Riverport Parkway. So we started naming it that. Now, it does deviate on the south side, south of 95, which I don't think is that much of a large of a concern. It does deviate from the existing Purysburg Road alignment. So there does need to be a differentiation, in my opinion, of a different name. But certainly, north of a 95, yes, leave it as Purysburg Road.
Okay.
Just leave it as Purysburg a little.
Well, and I will, I will say, there has been a lot of coordination with the 404 permitting, back to another, there's some historical monumentation that needs to be provided as part of the overall 404 permit. There's been a tremendous amount of coordination. Back to the concerns and comments relative to the battlefield site, same with that. There are setbacks that are applied because of that battlefield site. Gant, which is part of RS Webb and Associates, who are professionals in their industry, submitted that report to the State Historic Preservation Office. The State Historic Preservation Office accepted that. You have to respect their opinion on that one. And I do want to make the other point while I'm standing up here, concerns about water quality, stormwater discharge, and things like that. There has been a tremendous amount of coordination that have occurred over the last 15 years in agreements with Savannah Riverkeeper Coastal SLC regarding the water quality and discharge from this project that go above and beyond typical projects. from this project that go above and beyond typical projects. I can assure you, we're meeting Monday on-site to install, look at locations for installing monitoring stations. So to your point earlier, which is a great one, be proactive, not reactive. So, again, a lot of things have occurred behind the scene. I know we get lost in the mix in all these discussions, so just want to bring some of those to the forefront.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Paget. I live at 321 Deerfield Road, just outside of Hardyville. Can I use, is this a marker?
Yeah, the green.
My house is right there. On any given day, you'll see eight to 10 cars lined up on Church Road to come across, trying to get across 321. There's been a huge increase in population in this area in the last 10 years. People have built way out of town, but they come right through here every day. But now, you wait till July 4th weekend, and you see that road 321 right there, be backed up five miles with traffic, waiting on one intersection in Hardyville to get on Highway 17, going to I-95. And when they get there, they're backed up all the way through Hardyville. You know, you guys, all of you, if you've been through Hardyville on July 4th weekend, you'll know what it is. I go behind the post office to try to get out on Main Street to get out of town, and it's still back to. That's today. If you start building houses in here with no other way to get out, what are you going to have? It's going to upset people who have lived here for many years, that are getting pushed aside and their opinions are left out because we got some developer that wants to make a ton of money putting homes in here for no reason. There's plenty of places in this country they can put houses. Why in here? And they talk about a historical area? Yes. Piersburg Road is a historic road. That landing that used to be there was the main landing from South Carolina into Georgia because the south of there was nothing but swamp land and rice fields, and they couldn't go across. So they made way to go across there into Georgia at Piersburg. The whole road is historic, all the way up to where it joins 321 again. But once again, on holiday weekends, that road is full of people. This road is full of people. That road is full of people. Over by Stini's Funeral Home is full of people. Going on to Industrial Park Boulevard is full of people. You don't know it unless you live here. And these folks that want to do things, they don't live here. They don't put up with it. They don't see, in my opinion, they may not even care. So if you don't look out for us, nobody's going to look out for us. It's our area that they're trying to, and this is why life preserved the area. I mean, I mean, it is full of wildlife. And if you care anything about wildlife and preserving nature, you ought to care about that area in there because that's all it is. And I've hunted many years in there, killed a lot of deer and squirrels and raccoons and stuff. And now they want to make it houses. I think it's ridiculous. And Piersburg Road is Piersburg Road, not Riverport Parkway. And, you know, I could go on and on, but I think I've said enough. I'm sick and tired of seeing, you know, I-95 is planned to be widened up to Exit 8 or just past Exit 8. That's going to be some water relief, but still, people are going to be coming through here to try to get on 95 from upstate. And, I mean, I've had people stop at my yard and ask if they could give their children, let them use the bathroom because they can't get into town. And I've gladly let them do it because they don't have any other means. I've given water to people that was hot and thirsty, sitting in their car in front of my house. So that's how bad it is. And it's going to get worse as days go by, and even especially if you put people in that area to live as a residence, it's not going to be any better.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone else?
Well, I think they've said it all, but I do, I do have just some pictures of Piersburg. To the mayor, council members, I do have some pictures of Piersburg at our monument. We want it to stay like this. Can I present this to you guys?
What did you say? I didn't hear you.
Pictures of Piersburg, how beautiful it is, historic, the monument, everything. You guys should keep this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'm Joyce Gerald. I am a Piersburg resident. I've lived there since 1998. Now, what I was told at the first meeting for Riverport, I'm the board member who did not vote for this to happen because there was an agreement between the city, the county, and the state and the school board, because I live on Church Road and because I know how dangerous that road is when 18-wheelers are barreling down it, and that's happening right now. Can you imagine when all of the 18-wheelers from Riverport come along Piersburg Road and then up Church Road? The people who live on Church Road have one way to get their mail, and that's on the other side of the street. Okay? There are a lot of senior citizens on that road, there are a lot of handicapped people on that road. It is the main road that the school bus drives to get the children who live in Piersburg. They go down, they go to the right to Honey Hill, and the rest of Piersburg Road to the left through Piersburg Road, all the way to where Ms. Clark's church is. If what we've been told is that 18-wheelers will be coming out of Riverport, down Piersburg Road, and along Church Road, we're going to have a significant problem. We will have lots of accidents. That's a challenge. Now, on Church Road, right where the School Cut Road is, just above it where Beechwood Drive is going to be, there will be an early learning center there for preschool children. Referendum was passed, and it's going to be built on that road with 18-wheelers barreling up and down Church Road past an early learning center. Just visualize that. That's where the old West Hardyville campus was. It's now leveled. Ran a referendum, and an early learning center will be on that property, right around from where Beechwood Drive, where they say they're going to be doing whatever, not far from that. Where School Cut Road is, move up, there's woods, and there's a road, and there's the old West Hardyville property where Sherry Carroll and I think you worked. That is going to become an early learning center. I live on Church Road over there since 1978. That road has significant challenges with flooding, when it rains and rains and rains and rains. A lady had a massive accident there because, don't forget about the DOT, they don't care about that area. They don't keep the ditches clear, and the ditches are filled with logs, and the pine straw that comes down from the top of Church Road, it has a slight incline, stops at my They hydroplane through my next-door neighbor's fence. All of those things have to be considered if we're going to have 18-wheelers running up and down that road. And that's what I am visualizing because Riverport is going to be a huge massive development. Forget about the 500 or 200 additional people, they're going to be using that road at the 321 intersection. When, not if, but when there's an accident on I-95, the alternate road is 321. I sat at that intersection one Sunday, coming home from church, for 15 minutes. I could not cross 321 to get home on Church Road. That's the reality of what everyone who lives in Piersburg has to deal with on an ongoing basis. And now we're going to add additional traffic? And then the crazy idea of putting a roundabout at Deerfield Road and 321, really? Church Road, an 18-wheeler cannot navigate a roundabout. It just doesn't happen. I'm from the country where that existed originally. We have to consider the people who live there now. I know money's important, I know all this other stuff is important, but that is an area where people have lived for many, many, many years. And like you said at that intersection, it happens consistently. We have to consider the people who are there. Aside from all of that, we don't even live in the city of Hardyville. We don't. And this city council is determining what our life will be like in Piersburg. I have a significant problem with that. We don't get to vote for anybody in the city of Hardyville because we don't live in the city of Hardyville. The city of Hardyville is going to determine whether or not I will be safe on Church Road, whether the children who will be in the learning center will be safe on Church Road, whether all the senior citizens who live on Church Road are going to be safe because there will be 18-wheelers driving up and down to get to Riverport. How does that work? Like the gentleman said, Church Road is not in the city of Hardyville. You have no control over that. Neither is Piersburg Road, neither is 321. But this city council is making decisions about what happens to the residents of Piersburg. I have a significant problem with that. We don't get to vote because we're not in the city of Hardyville, but the city of Hardyville is determining what our life will be like.
I think to the developer and the engineers, you've heard significant concerns about traffic, and I think that whatever plan gets submitted to SCDOT, it not only has to accommodate the future traffic, but it must improve the current conditions. So, you know, if, if there's to be any development in here, that, those intersections have to improve the current conditions so that what they're talking about does not happen. And that's why I'm going to go back to Mr. Mearsman's statement about, you know, the 250. We have to have a plan that's approved by DOT because when we talk about roundabouts, just because, that's just talk. It doesn't mean a thing until DOT says, this is what we will allow. This is what we need to put there to not only accommodate the new houses, but to accommodate the problem that's there now. Okay? So if we do our job right, by adding these homes, we're going to solve the current problem. And that's part of what we're going to hold you folks to, to come up with a plan. And I think Mr. Mearsman, again, and John said it too, and everybody's, I think maybe the 250 is something that, we need a plan from DOT, an approved plan for the area in the next 18 months before, by the time you get the permit.
An approved concept.
Right. Okay, this is what, this is what DOT.
Full 500.
Right.
Support unlocking this and providing the.
What it will support for this 500, what it will support, what is necessary to take care of the current problems and to accommodate the future traffic. Does that make sense?
I believe so.
Okay. So, you know, we have to hear what, what people are saying. I think the other thing that was brought up, we need, and I think it's part of the PDD, we need an historical inventory, okay? A proper one, approved by the South Carolina Historical Society or whatever that's called, okay? So that we identify the historically significant areas. And look, every home in Piersburg that was built probably is on a battlefield from 1776, right? But what we, what we can do is identify what has not been disturbed and do something, just like we talked about earlier with the cemeteries, to make sure that they are preserved and protected in whatever way is necessary. Okay? So that will, will hold that. Is there anything else, council, that you want to hold the developer to? We heard about, we're certainly not changing that name, so get that out of your head. We need a, we need a TIA that, that will support the road improvements that we're talking about, right? I think the council wants to stay with the 250, okay? And.
Clarification on that one? Clarification, this 250?
We want before, when you get to the 250 threshold, okay, which will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of four and a half years, a year and a half for permitting, three years for, for selling, okay, and building, okay? We need to have a, we need to have the road improvements to begin. Whatever, whatever DOT approves, we want to see the road improvements at 21 and Church Road.
I think we can agree to have a concept, discussions with DOT and Jasper County because they obviously had to get in the middle of this conversation, to have that conversation progress.
Lamar, here's, here's the situation. You can agree to 250, or you can have these council people vote no.
Yeah.
Okay? So, you know, I think you need to think about that before you say no to the 250, okay? You are hearing from the council that they want 250. So, you know, that's where it was originally, before it was changed. Council's basing their vote on, on that number. So I think you need to, by time second reading, if it passes tonight, that you come back with a plan on, on, give us a timetable, okay? While you're being permitted, what are you going to do with DOT? When's that going to come back? When are you going to start it? You're going to start it at 250. When are you going to finish it? Is it 500? We need a, we need a plan there. So understand what these folks are saying we need in order to get their vote, okay? All right. So do we have, Brown or Katie, do we have a list of all these things? The list of what the public has asked for? And so that when we come back, if it passes tonight, we come back to second reading, I want to go item by item, what exactly has been done in the three weeks since the, all right. Now, before I close, public hearing is, please, any more? I'm going to, because we're way past the 30-minute. I'm going to hold you to the three-minute timetable.
Rich Tarzillo, my father's buried at that cemetery. My plot is in that cemetery, my wife, my whole family. And I know we hear what the local population is concerned about, and their quality of life, they feel like is going to be less. But what about the quality of life of these people? They're trapped by a cemetery that's this wide. When I-95 gets blocked up, we know where the traffic, we all know where the traffic's going to go, but not only that, on the other end, we're going to, we've got all the warehouses, imagine all the dump truck, or the over-the-road trucks, all the traffic when they're trying to get to Exit 3. Just imagine, just consider, I don't know how they'll feel because they're not there yet, but how, what is their quality of life going to look like when they're bottlenecked between all of those warehouses and all of the 18-wheelers trying to get in, kind of like what we have at Exit 5 every day? And this is just phase, this is Phase 1, the little, the beginning of this. I'm just, I'm just saying that, yes, when people do move here, I'm concerned. I'm, I'm just saying that, yes, when people do move here, I'm concerned, we, we're already seeing, we'll put a warehouse on top of your house here, or we'll put a sandpit eight foot from your, after we bill out $150,000 homes, we'll, we'll, we'll build a sandpit. It's starting to kind of get a little scary. If y'all don't mind, just, I heard something tonight that really impressed me. You, John, y'all, it's very impressive to know that y'all have the power here. And I'm glad to see you, you, you recognize that because we're headed to somewhere that's not going to be comfortable for anybody. We're going to have a whole lot of problems in the future because of what we're doing now. Maybe. Thanks for considering it.
Thank you. I think there's one other thing that I'd like to add to the list, because I keep hearing about eighteen-wheelers going up Church Road because of Exit 3. The reason, one of the reasons Exit 3 is put in is so the eighteen-wheelers do not come up there. Now, if they're coming from north, from BJWSA, then that, that already exists. But the whole idea of Exit 3 is that eighteen-wheelers do not come here. That's, that was the concept. So what I'd like, Lamar...
Yes?
For next reading, let's add to the list, we need to know from the traffic experts, what's the anticipation of the traffic flow of the eighteen-wheelers, the, the trucks that go in and out of those warehouses? Let's put up a map with, like, you can get a 3D thing. Where do you expect the trucks to go from what is, what will be Riverport Parkway, south of Exit 3, where all these warehouses are going? Because there's not going to be any eighteen-wheelers living in this...
Correct.
...in this zone here.
Understood.
But I, I think we need to see some sort of 3D recognition, because a number of people think, already said it, they think eighteen-wheelers is going to go past Church Road. I'd like to hear from where we expect traffic to be flowing and what kind of traffic for the next reading. Can we have that done?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Jill Bennett, and I own property on Church Road. And, um, John was talking about the Savannah River. Do you know that Savannah's water is picked up from the Abicorne Creek? And that is below where they're wanting to put that water in, the runoff? So that's going to affect the city of Savannah's water. And, let's see, my husband's texting me all this stuff, so just give me a second. And you're talking about the truck traffic. I used to drive a truck a long time ago. They're going to look for the shortest route. And if they want to go towards Hardyville or towards 321, they're not going to Exit 3. You know, that don't make any sense. And when 321 gets backed up on Purvisburg Road, where it meets north on 321, the traffic starts coming down Purvisburg Road, they're searching for places to get back on 95. And that's just, and then when you have a hurricane, it's, it's even worse. You know, the people's trying to evacuate and get on 321, and they're all searching for different routes. And that dumps more traffic, not including all of that traffic. And one thing I was thinking about is, why couldn't they put an entrance somewhere beside, on Church Road? You know, there, you know, there's from Church Road to where the VIDOC is, that they might could purchase property and put their entrance there instead of dumping that traffic on Church Road. And, um, that's about it. And for the historical thing, there is a land fort right across from Green Cemetery that's from the Revolutionary War back in that property that, you know, most people don't know exists. But I used to hunt with my husband back there, and so we know everything about that property. I killed my first deer back there. But, um, they pretty much answered all the other questions, but our biggest thing is the concern about the traffic and how it's going to affect our lives. And then, where are they going to put the lift stations on Church Road? Or where are they going to dump into the sewer that goes to the treatment plant? Because since Hardyville has added all these homes, I have too many lift stations, and they have blown out my check valves three times in the last eight months. Just a thought. And they've worked fine until all this growth has come into Hardyville, and now I'm having problems with it. Because when the pressure on the pump kicks on right there where the old school was, then it's, it's making it difficult for my lift stations to push, push into the main line. So that's another issue.
Katie Brenner, you hear her concerns? Can we have, again, if it passes tonight, I'd like to have an answer to that question at the next...
And I would like to suggest that you table this until they get their information to you before y'all approve it. And I'm sure everybody else agrees with me.
Yes.
You know? So that's all.
Okay. Thank you. And I, thank you, everyone who, who spoke tonight. I can assure you, I can speak on behalf of all of us up here, knowing my fellow council persons, that we, we do take everything to heart and that we want to do what's right for everyone. One of the, and I think I've said this in the past, one of the toughest things for us up here and any elected officials is trying to do the right thing for the citizens. At the same time, we have an obligation to the property rights of the landowners. And how do we balance that is, is a, a challenge that we are constantly faced with, and it's not easy. And that's why we're here and why we have public hearings, why we've had a workshop to hear all the, all the concerns that you have. And I'm sure whatever decision we make, we're going to have somebody not real happy with us, and, and, and that's also another tough part of what we, what we, what our job is up here. So, now, public comment has been closed, and so at this point, we need to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or make any changes to the first reading of ordinance 2025-06-18H. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-06-18H. Do I have a second? Mrs. Maynes, I think it's very important that the council understands what happens if there is no second. Please explain that.
If the motion fails, then there's no action taken on the item, which could delay a second reading by six months. Yeah. If, if, if you want a denial, then you vote for a denial.
Well, it's, you know, I've, I've been in this position before, and the planning commission just did this not too long ago. If you're against it, say no. But say something. And that would require a second and a vote. That's one of the possible outcomes.
Mr. Mayor? I will make a motion of 2025-06-18H.
So we have a motion, is that a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any further comments or questions by council or the public?
Just...
You are the public, go ahead.
I just want to make the point, and it's a difficult decision, but just to be clear, this does include Purvisburg Road improvements which connect to Exit 3. That's what, it's a major component of this IMP approval, or request.
Mayor Williams?
In, in other words, in other words, if this fails, the road that goes from Exit 3 to Millstone Landing won't happen. Is that what you're saying?
That is exactly what I'm saying, and it won't be delayed at the very least. Exit 3.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. I asked the council or the public if they had any further to say, and it seems like Ms. Butler has something to say. Please come to the podium.
Sorry, forgot.
And put the timer on.
I'm sorry, I can see this is very difficult for you, and I appreciate all of your, you know, especially, you know, anyway, you've worked really hard on this, but don't just pass it because you're pressured into it. I mean, really, I, I don't know. I don't know what your options are. I know, you know, my husband being in those seats before, it's difficult, but I don't know what our options are. But they've got a lot of issues, and I hate to see it just pass along. Only did it in 30 seconds.
I appreciate that, and also, there's 15 years of working on Exit 3 that are part of this as well. And we've tried to bring Exit 3 to this community that brings thousands of new jobs to every one of our children and grandchildren, right down the road. It all has, it's not because we're, speaking for myself, I'm pressured into anything from a developer or anything. Part of our consideration is the development of Exit 3 and the entire Riverport Parkway thing that we've been working on for 15 years. And every day of my nine years as mayor has been devoted to bringing jobs to our community. So, that's, that's part of the pressure, yeah. Not the pressure to enrich some developer, not at all. It's to enrich our community. So, anyway, that's my council comment. So I think at this point, we have a motion, we have a second, and Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor, I have, I have one reminder as well, just to complete the answer to the question you asked earlier. This is just first reading. Your ordinance is not given a final approval until you approve it at a second reading.
No, understood. 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 Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have voiced a lot of concerns to the developers of this, and my feeling is, is, given the chance, these answers are going to be necessary before second reading. And that the timetable begins, the clock will begin, but these answers need to be, not just for us on the council. These folks out here deserve those answers. That's all.
And we will have the list, if this passes, we'll have the list and every one of them addressed, if it passes. If it doesn't, you have less work to do. And also, recognize, council, a two-two vote, given the motion makes this fail. So, now that we all understand, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Carroll?
No.
Mayor Protemp Guzman?
No.
Councilman Mearsman?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. So does Exit 3. Thank you very much. Okay. We are finished. Let's go to the manager's report. We are still in session. Please. We are still in session. Rena, let's go. Let's go, let's finish.
Mayor, so the motion to approve failed, but there still has not been a motion to deny. So the item, there, there hasn't been what's called a dispositive motion on the matter. You can make a motion, you can mo, make a motion to table the item if you'd like to, to a date certain.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to make a...
Yes, sir.
Please, can we have quiet, please? We're still, we, we have another motion to this matter. So if you could tell them, if they're interested, there's another motion to this matter.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to table this, to give the respondent time to bring back the answers, this question, to the questions this council has proposed this evening.
So, Ms. Maynes, we have a motion to table this after a motion to deny.
No, sir, you had a motion to approve, and the motion to approve failed.
Right.
Right? So it, it doesn't mean it's a motion to deny. You'd have to have a motion to deny for the item to fail. So the motion to approve failed, but there still hasn't been a dispositive action. So there can either be, now your choices are, you can table the matter to a date certain, or there can be a motion to disapprove, and if that motion passes, then the item fails.
Okay. Counsel, you've heard your options. Is there a motion?
He made that right, Mayor.
I, I, I support the, the motion to table, because it gives them a chance to come back.
Okay, let's turn your mics on.
I would support the motion to table it because it gives them the chance to respond to the questions that were asked up here.
She's seconding his motion.
She's seconding the motion to table it. We need a date specific.
Yes.
Would a month give you enough time?
We can work with two weeks if we have...
Well, because part of that is you have to have some definitive forward motion with DOT. So I think a month would be more...
I agree, good. What if, not July 10th, but whatever the next one was.
Yes, the second meeting in July.
We can agree to that.
That's fine, then. I don't have that calendar in front of me. The 24th of July? All right.
Gives them about a month.
We will come back and, for first reading, then.
So we have a motion to table for one month?
To the second, second meeting in July, yes, sir.
And we have, do we have a second?
Ms. Guzman gave a second, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions by council or the public? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Guzman?
Yes.
Councilman Mearsman?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. So this will, first reading will come back in a month. Okay. We now have the manager's report. Mr. Gruber?
I have nothing to add, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Carroll?
No, sir, I think that's about it for tonight.
Mrs. Guzman?
I am, sir. I thought you were...
Mr. Miersman? I have no thing more to say. Can we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.